Call this session to order Wednesday, October seventeenth, one P M. Open for visitor comments. Okay. Discussion topics, presentation from Enterprise Fleet Management.
How you doing all today?
Good.
My name is Ryan Alford. I work for Enterprise Fleet Management. And I'm going to try to do my best to give you a very high level overview of what we do and who we're with and who we work with. Had the pleasure to speak with John and Matt recently regards to the city's fleet and looking at different ways we may be able to operate, help get new vehicles on the road and help you reduce costs at the same time. So again, I'm just about twenty minutes or so going over a few slides. Again, just to give you a high level overview of who we are and what we do. And I'll hopefully have about ten minutes left to answer some questions you all may have. So.
Sounds good.
We'll get right into it. So Enterprise Fleet Management is part of Enterprise Rental. So we're a division of the rental team. But we are a separate division. So this conversation is not circling around rentals. It's circling around the vehicles that you own and operate as a citywide. We now work with over eight hundred plus government entities across the country. That's currently our fastest growing segment of our business. Just locally, here's some of the references we have that we work with locally here in Oregon. And it's again, it's just one of the situations where what we do from our buying power and infrastructure that Enterprise has as a whole, seems to be a really good fit for government entities. So again, like I said, we now work with over eight hundred plus across the country. We are a full-service fleet manager company. We help our clients, everything from private companies to public partnerships, with acquisition, funding, fuel programs, maintenance programs, resale, safety, as you can see up there, pretty much anything that has to do with vehicles, we can help you all with. So what the conversations we've had so far is basically strictly off some of the P D units you all have, some of your police vehicles and looking at different ways we can get you into new vehicles from an acquisition standpoint. Our main goal as a fleet manager company and the reason companies are, you know, private and public partnerships to work with us or companies work with us and government entities, is our goal is to tell you the optimal time to replace a vehicle based off three main factors being depreciation, fuel and maintenance costs. Today, cities are basically buying vehicles cash and running them until kind of the wheels fall off. And there's just a different way you can hold on to vehicles that's changed in the last ten to twenty years. And so our job as a fleet manager company is to help identify when is the optimal time to get in and out of a vehicle based off of those three main factors. And that's why, you know, government entities are working with us today is to help drive those conversations. So just taking a high-level snapshot of the current fleet today at City of St. Helens, this is without the police units in there. Seventy-one percent of the current fleet is ten-plus years or older. And whether that not sound terrible when it's all said and done, in our world, vehicles our age just have higher maintenance and fuel costs. And the city has a unique situation where because of certain rebates and incentives you all get through manufacturers, the goal behind anything in the world is to buy low as we can on a vehicle, control our operating costs in the middle and sell the vehicles as high as we can. It's really no different than what we do in our rental division. We buy a lot of vehicles a year. We buy about a million a year. We sell a million a year. The better we can buy them for and the better we sell them for and control our costs in the middle, that's the optimal way to run a fleet. So you're all approaching in a kind of a, not a crisis point, but a point in time where if you don't start to put a plan together to replace your vehicles a little quicker, a little faster, you have again, quite a bit of vehicles that are above that ten-year mark and they'll have more maintenance costs and they'll have transmission, engine issues, you name it. And typically what we see with government entities, they'll put another thousand dollars into a vehicle or another five hundred dollars into a vehicle versus possibly replacing that vehicle because they don't have the cash necessarily to go out and stroke another thirty thousand dollar check for a vehicle. We offer different funding structures that allows our government entities to do more with less cash, all the while reducing their expenses because now they have brand-new vehicles on the road. They have no maintenance and no fuel costs compared to an older vehicle. So that's the idea behind the partnership of what we can bring to the table for the City of St. Helens. I had reached out to Matt numerous times and parts of getting in front of him and having these types of conversations. And of course, that's why they've asked me here today to kind of give you a high level overview of what that looks like. So. This is in essence what the funding structure looks like. Again, I'll try to make this as easy as possible to understand. But in essence, what we're looking to do is instead of financing an entire vehicle or stroking a check for cash for an entire vehicle, we might tell you to only keep that vehicle for three or four years because that's the optimal time to keep that vehicle. So why pay for the entire depreciation on the vehicle, only pay for a portion of depreciation on the vehicle? You can do that in a basically a flexible finance or a lease structure. And the way it would work in this situation here is if you go out and you buy a twenty-five thousand dollar truck, you make fifteen thousand dollars worth of payments on that vehicle over a three- or four-year period. The vehicle still has a book value on the vehicle of ten thousand. So think about the way you fund a vehicle today, your personal life. You have a book balance. You're always paying off down on the vehicle, no different in this situation here. The difference is you get equity rights to the vehicle. So what we're trying to do is say, okay, if we're going to hold this truck for three years, let's only make fifteen thousand dollars worth of payments on that truck because why depreciate the whole vehicle if we're not going to keep it the whole time? And then we turn around and we sell that vehicle back on your behalf out into the open market. And when we sell it over that book value, which is in there ten thousand dollars, the equity or the difference between what we sell it for and what you owe is equity rights back to the city. And so the idea behind this model is to say, okay, if you can go out and buy a truck for ten thousand dollars less than what I could personally buy a truck because you get government rebates and incentives, you have an opportunity to hold on to that vehicle for a few years and then almost sell it back for what you bought it for sometimes. And again, while you're doing that, you're controlling costs, you're controlling your operating expenses, you're not having to stroke checks for vehicles on any given basis. And this can apply for any type of vehicle you have on your fleet, including your police vehicles. So this is a way that government entities can again, can just do more with less cash. But instead of putting all their money in an operating expense bucket, they're kind of flattening it out. Today, you have a really low capital budget. We have a really high operating budget as it pertains to your fleet. We're just trying to even that out a little bit more and make it more even keeled. And this is a funding structure that will allow you to do that. That make sense? Okay. It's really fast. And byproduct of having a new fleet is having a safer fleet. And every government entity I've spoken with, this is one of their top priorities when it comes to their fleet. Ten years ago or eleven years ago now, airbags were not standard in vehicles. They are now. City has quite a bit of vehicles that are older than two thousand and seven. They don't have standard airbags, standardization. Electronic stability control was the best safety feature since the seatbelt. It helps vehicles from sliding around and tipping over. That was standard equipment in two thousand and twelve. In two thousand and seventeen, you have backup cameras, forward warning collision, blind spot warning. All these safety features don't sound like a big benefit, but they really are. And it comes standard with vehicles today. So there's a soft dollar cost in not having a safe fleet. And that's part of the reasons why another, another byproduct of having a newer fleet is having a safer fleet. Resale is a big part of this, a big reason why a lot of cities utilize Enterprise is we sell a million vehicles a year. We can help you remarket your vehicles back out to a network of wholesale dealers that we already work with and get you the most bang for your buck when it comes to your vehicles. Anyone can sell a fifteen-year-old vehicle for five hundred bucks, just as good as you probably can. But when we're selling a four- or five-year-old truck that has maybe thirty or forty thousand miles on it, we have a network of dealers that will pay premium for that vehicle, which again is all equity back to the city. And the idea again behind this model is to buy as low as you can, control our fuel and operating costs in the middle and sell at the right time. There's different times of the year to sell vehicles. If you sell vehicles in the first quarter, for example, it's a higher resale value if you sell at the end of the quarter, the quarter of the year, the fourth quarter of the year. So we've taken a lot of considerations. When we sell a vehicle and we sell a million per year, if we sell it for one dollar less than what we're supposed to, we lost a million dollars. So Enterprise has done a really good job of creating networks, creating dealerships, relationships, so we can sell our vehicles and we sell your vehicles through the same exact avenues as we do our own. That make sense? So we have over seven hundred dedicated remarketing professionals across the country that all they do all day is sell vehicles. That's another big part of what we can offer to the City of St. Helens. All the while throughout this process, understanding what you're spending on your maintenance and fuel cost, Enterprise offers a website that comes along with our program where all of your maintenance and fuel costs are automated into a website. You can pick which particular vehicles you want to put on this program, but what this allows you all to do is actually know what you're spending on your vehicles. Fleet management one-on-one is know your cost, be proactive. And if you can do those two things, we can help you reduce your expenses. If I ask you today what you're spending on a certain truck, you should know what you're spending on a certain truck. And if you don't know, then how do you know if you need to replace it or not? And so part of this process is putting you on a maintenance program or a fuel program that automates that for you by using local vendors or maybe even your own shop. And that allows you to again, have actual data for your, for your fleet. And our job as a fleet manager company is to come out and visit with you all two or three times a year and say, hey, look, vehicle number ten is costing you X amount of dollars per month. You're getting eight miles per gallon. This is what you're actually spending on this vehicle. Whereas a brand-new vehicle is going to get you twenty-one miles per gallon, it's going to have this maintenance cost and here's your payment. And really break it down for you. So it takes the gut feeling out of, of a vehicle and it makes it more real and with numbers. And so we have the same thing with maintenance. We have the same thing with fuel. So we did, we partner with a fuel company called Ride Express. It's a simple fuel card. And whether you all continue to do fuel onsite or however you do it, it's just part of our program. Everything that we offer is à la carte in essence. So there is no requirement that you do our maintenance or our fuel program, but it just comes along with what we do. And again, if I can tell you that you're losing ten miles per gallon on a fifteen-year-old truck compared to a brand-new vehicle that has today's fuel economy standards, there's a big cost savings in that. And so our philosophy with anything that we do is total cost of ownership. And what is the total cost of ownership to run and operate a vehicle? Not just what you bought it for, but what also you're paying in between. And so we really get into the weeds of fleet management, but that's why we do what we do. So that's just one reason why, you know, having a fuel car or a fuel program and knowing your miles per gallon is important from a cost-saving standpoint. That's pretty much the highest level overview I can possibly give you. That's actually good. I think I got through it pretty quick. Because there's a lot of questions that I'm sure you'll probably have and I think we spend more time doing that. So go ahead.
You're talking about maintenance and the possibility of, of including that. And I'd like to know if we take advantage of that. Is that going to, are you going to be using local resources or are we?
Okay. Correct. So we have a local network of vendors, you know, we're, so we're headquartered out of Toowalton, our, our particular office. Enterprise has fifty-five regional offices. So we go after, just to give you a little bit more detail. We work with companies that have anywhere, or organizations have twenty to about two hundred and fifty-three, three hundred vehicles. That's the niche we go after.
So when I talk about local, I'm talking about St. Helens.
Correct. So we have, we've already looked up, there's a local vendors here that you already have.
Okay.
You know, any national chain you can think of, the Firestones of the world, the G P Loops, they're already on our program, Le Schwabs. However, if there's ever a particular shop that's local that your team trusts and wants to use and it's not on our program for whatever reason, we can always sign them up.
I have two questions. It says here on the screen that you are an account executive.
Correct.
And I'm sure that that goes into sales and I'm sure that that's what you're doing today. Now, to me, where, who would our contact be if we have problems and how do you manage that? That's my first question.
Okay. That's a very good question. So we are not like, you know, hey, here's a few vehicles and we run away. We actually assign you a local account management team. So every one of our customers has an account manager and account fleet coordinator that works out of our Toowalton office. So we are local. We really want to have about two or three hours of your time a year. We have core meetings. We have a fleet planning meeting, which is typically around summertime, early fall. That's when the model year starts up for, for new manufacturers' model year. We want to sit down with you all, plan your year out, figure out what your budget is. Now, government's a little bit different. We might have to meet with you more during your budget season to figure that out. The idea is to be proactive and plan ahead and put a, you know, put a plan together. Your account manager will do that for you. Provide you pricing year-over-year, recommendations, the right tool for the job. We're manufacturer agnostic. So whether you do Ford, Chevy, it doesn't really matter to us what you do. We're always going to provide you with the lowest tool to get the job done. And so part of that process is meeting with you those three times a year. The other meeting we have is an annual client review, which is in the springtime, where we actually compare your costs from last year to costs of this year. We're always a phone call away. We're not a one-eight-hundred number. And we're local. So we can always drive down to you and come see you if need to.
So accountability in reporting, do you have, you said that you'd be available once or twice a year or whatever?
Yeah, it's our core meetings.
Okay. Would, would, in, in terms of reporting, as counsel is very, very feels that reporting is very important for accountability.
Correct.
And, and I think that that's a, I think that that's a big issue with us that more than just once a year would be something that we would expect. Would you, could you accommodate that?
Well, everything in theory would be on our website. So at any given point in time, if you wanted to find out what your lease payments were, what your lease schedules were, how much you're paying on maintenance, how much you're paying on fuel, it's all click away. So you probably have more visibility than you've ever had before if you were to move to those type of programs because again, everything's right there.
Okay.
We did individually, but the reports are streamed on the web so that the public can hear them too.
Yeah. And everything's downloaded, Excelable. So you put in an Excel file. You can report it however you'd like. And when I say we have three core meetings a year, that's, that's the foundation of what we want. But at any given time, you can always give us a call and we can give you whatever information you might need. And if you want us to meet once a quarter, we can meet once a quarter. It's really whatever your needs are.
Then the second part of my question is, what do we, what, what do you do with cities or municipalities that have a huge inventory? Not that we have a huge inventory, but we do have an, an inventory. How do you phase into an inventory that, that, that we have on deck?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we did put together a initial recommendations or a fleet profile. It's part of our just process of working with any client we meet with, whether it's a municipality or a private company. So we do put together our initial recommendations. We have to work within the confines of your budget, of course, as well. Starting day one, everything that we do, everything that I've explained is through acquisition of a vehicle. So in theory, if you wanted to do two vehicles this year through us, we could still put your entire fleet on a maintenance program. We could still put your entire fleet on a fuel program. And then now, when we come back next year or next time, your next budget cycle, I'll actually have real data to present to you all and say, hey, look, these, we started with these two, which is great. But here's your other thirty vehicles you have. Here's what they're costing you. And here's our initial, again, additional recommendations of how you can replace vehicles. There is no requirement for vehicles per year. There's no minimum or maximum. We've had some government entities that done, you know, seventy-five out the gate. And we've had some that do two or three and dip toes in the water a little bit and then over time it grows. So, you know, to us, there's really no perfect way to start. But again, we do provide recommendations of what you can replace and we do associate that with a cost saving. So that's part of the process as well. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question on, for actually our financial guy, Matt, how, I know that seventy-one percent of our rigs are ten years or older. And I know that you started accounting for this. We actually started budgeting this in our, in our previous budget committee meetings. So how is this going to affect the budget as far as what you have allotted? Because we were looking, we knew we had an issue here. We definitely knew. And we've actually started setting some money aside for that.
So each department sets aside a certain amount of money for replacement vehicles each year as well as paying their fair share of the equipment fund maintenance. So the mechanics that we have, the insurance, all the costs associated with maintenance on those vehicles as well as fuel. When Ryan and I met initially, it was specifically about the police department. Specifically in the police department, we have our vehicles on a ten-year cycle period. Personally, that's about twice as long as what they should be. Now, that's mainly due to the budget restrictions that we have. When we outfit a car from purchasing the actual vehicle to actually getting it outfitted with sirens, lights, everything else, the cages that goes in, we're into it about fifty thousand or so a year. What Ryan's and Enterprise's plan does is if we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars and replace one new car every year, we could be paying fifty thousand dollars in theory and have nine, ten new cars every four or five years. Because we're, instead of paying the fifty thousand dollars as a flat check, we're paying four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars a month for each car. Very, very much similar to like a lease payment. So we're spending almost the amount, the same amount of money as we are now, but we're getting newer vehicles.
How does that work for us outfitting a police car? Do you actually reach out to a, a, a smaller city to see if they want to buy a outfitted car? Or what do we do with that? What, I mean, is that money just tossed away?
So no. So we can, we can help with all outfit. So we use the same vendors that you're actually already using today. A company called Wireworks to help you outfit your vehicles. Enterprise would order the vehicle directly from the manufacturer, have the vehicle sent into Wireworks, have it outfitted. We'd pick it up and deliver it to you. When it came time to remarket or sell that vehicle four or five years down the road, there's certain things that happen to hap, hap, have to happen to police vehicles before you can sell them, right?
Yeah, like decommissioned, all the lights pulled, everything.
Exactly. So, but we would still help you remarket that vehicle or sell that vehicle once it's ready to go. That make sense?
If you wouldn't mind as well, if I can have Jose come up and talk to you from the police department specifically about some of the specific issues that the police department has and why we looked at this program.
Yeah, you can, you can sit there. Jose can just slide right next to you. Come on up.
Jose might be able to provide some real, actual information from you about what they see in the police department and how this program may benefit them.
Slide the mic over toward this.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I think everybody knows who I am, but I'll say it anyway. My name's Jose Castillo and I, I am employed by the city, specifically by the police department. So a few weeks ago, I was tasked to manage the fleet for our department. And so I started looking at seeing what kind of maintenance we do, where it gets done, how it gets done, how off, what the fleet health is, what the, what the condition of the vehicles are. And what I found is many of the maintenance items that we need to have done, I'm having to outsource, not through our maintenance facility, but through either Emmert or Eaton's Tire or through Le Schwab. So we're using maintenance facilities here in town to include even smaller, not brick and mortar locations, but also, for example, our transmission shop is actually a transmission shop in Warren. He, he has a shop there. He's established. His family's been working with the police department for a long time. So we're already doing the things that Enterprise is going to allow us to do already. Or maintain that, relationships that we have with the folks. Because I mean, I, I have contacts at Eaton's and Ganon over at Generation Transmission. And so we'll still maintain that in town. You know, keep it local because that's what I do.
Okay.
You know, I, when I go shopping for my kids, I'd rather go shopping downtown and get them clothes here than have to go to Hillsboro or somewhere else. You know, and that was my concern is do we get to keep that or do we have to take it out to Portland? And that's not the case. The case is that we still get to do it here. At our maintenance shop, we're really limited to what we can do there. Mostly oil changes, tire repairs. When we do have a tire change, it's not balanced. They don't have, I don't think we have the equipment to be able to balance it. So we have to send that out anyway and get it balanced again. So we're doubling up a lot of times on what we're doing. Instead of just sending it out to the one point and then spending the money once, we're having to do it twice on, on certain circumstances. Now, so I, I found a little bit of waste on that aspect of it. When we look at our vehicles, a lot of them are ten years, I'll tell you, is way too long. I've driven a car, police car, that had over a hundred thousand miles. I drive one now. We have, we have one patrol car like that now. And it's, it's scary. Just from operating it at a high speed, which we have to do often. That's, that's where it gets, you really start have to think about, okay, is it safer for me to drive slower? Or can I get there quicker on a newer car? One of the healthier cars in our fleet to do it more effectively. Because you, ultimately you want to get to where you need to be instead of breakdown somewhere or crash. So that's, that's where I started looking at and saying, what can we do more effectively? What program can we do? That do we just buy cars and hope that they last ten years? Because right now they're not. Or sometimes we get a lemon and we have one new car that has water intrusion problems. We've taken it to Emmert. They dissected that car completely stripped out. If any of you guys have a project car at home where all the seats, the carpet, the dash, everything's gone, it's just a shell, that's, that's where it was taken down to. Brought back up and we still have that water problem. So that's just a car that you're driving and you step on the brakes and a rush of water comes to the front. And now it's underneath your feet. So then you got to worry, okay, well, is my lights and sirens around? Is that electrical problem? Am I going to get electrocuted? Something going to happen? I don't know. I'm not an expert. I don't know. I don't, I don't want to, you know, my, my intention isn't to say, oh, it's a, it's a death trap. That's not.
Are you sure Lieutenant Ho didn't have it outfishing?
Well, there's a possibility that, that, you know, it could have been. I don't know. Maybe it's one of those outfit cars. I don't know. So, but the cars that we have now, they're, some of the equipment that we could have transferred to the new cars that we get, we do that anyway. And some stuff is just antiquated and it's, it needs to be replaced. But even at that replacement cycle, we're under this program that Enterprise is proposing, it makes sense. There's hasn't, so I'm, you know, I, I live in town, right? And I want to make sure that even my tax dollars are used effectively. So I did research and I went and saw, okay, what do we have, what have other cities done? Has there been any negative impacts? And I haven't found any. I haven't found any stories or any instances where the cities have lost money or it's been a bad program for them. And when we talk about, okay, do I have a number that I can call and say, hey, I need, I need to know where this is at? Or I need a report from my lieutenant so that I can give, so that I can report to him because that's who I report to and on, on the vehicle health. Everything, I went to the website and it is literally a click away. If you're at a council meeting and somebody asks you for that information and wants to know like right then, I think transparency is huge. And that's something that you can provide instantly on your screen from your chair to anybody at any time at any point. So you don't even have to have a, you know, a, a pre-downloaded Excel file. You can do it right from where you're at. In which I think now, when folks are saying, well, you have a whole brand-new fleet, how can you afford it? Well, this is how and this is why. Because I think, I would imagine you would have to answer those kinds of questions, you know?
Absolutely. You paint the cars and we get questions.
Yeah, that's right. And so, you know, a, a paint change really nowadays is a really small fee. Most of the time it's done with vinyl now. Instead of having to paint a black and white car, you get an all-black car, put a white sticker on the doors. You put our logo on it. When it comes time to sell it, you take our logo off, you take that white sticker off. And instead of having a two-tone patrol car, now you have a solid car. And SUVs always do better on the market than cars.
So you're feeling this is more cost-effective then?
Yes, absolutely.
I had a question. I didn't, just never been a cop, never been in a cop car. So I don't know.
Come on and ride along.
I know that a factor for the police that I've seen in the six years I've been here is the turnover of officers. And I just didn't know where antiquated equipment plays into maybe officers perceiving that this isn't the best job and they move on to a bigger, a bigger department that has better equipment. I didn't know.
Counselor, can I speak to that? And in fact, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut it off.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear.
You can see how many officers are passionate about this. They're here on their own time, got babysitters because it, that can't be ignored. Now, we'll tell you that we just opened up a position for a lateral. And we are in the process of possibly hiring a new officer because of this on the horizon as being a possibility. So on top of longevity for the officers, because they're, you know, that, that is, they want the best equipment available because it's a dangerous world out there. And it's not just bad guys with guns. More officers are killed in driving accidents than usually gunfire on a, on an average basis, except for the last two years. It's just been an anomaly. So not only will it, the longevity here to keep our employees here along with the other programs we have, but attracting new employees and cost-saving if we can get other, you know, lateral transfers in from other agencies that have already been trained because of this program and it's unique and it's on the forefront of the county.
I just, for me, it seems like another way to take care of just like healthcare.
Yes.
It's another way that we, as a council, as a government, take care of our employees.
And one of the benefits of this program, though Ryan touched upon it, is that vehicles change all the time. And who would have thought that it would be mandated that we'd have backup cameras in our vehicles, which ultimately reduces backing accidents, which ultimately saves the city money. I don't know what's on the horizon for new vehicles, but this will prevent us from going ten years and spending enormous amount of money to keep a vehicle in service when we can just, you know, work with Enterprise and get a new vehicle for whatever reason. And it keeps cutting edge. And again, technology changes, equipment changes, we don't know. But at least this gives us an opportunity to be forward-thinking and continue to move the city forward in progressiveness, especially with the police department, your first responders.
So this will probably have an effect on our insurance as well.
In a good way.
In a, yeah, in a positive way with more safety equipment.
It will probably likely even out because you're going to have newer vehicles. So obviously the insurance versus, a new vehicle versus old. But when you add in the safety components, it'll probably even out.
Okay, Matt, you said this is like a lease.
Correct.
It's not a lease?
It, it is a lease with the option of, and one of the questions that John and I talked with Ryan about was if at any time, for whatever reason, the city council, the chief, the city administrator, whoever thought this was not a good program and it's not working the way it's supposed to, we have the option at any time to leave. So the cars that are leased, let's say that the police department does three cars. So we're paying four hundred and fifty bucks a month. And we get to that point where it's that break-even point where Enterprise says, hey, you should probably sell them. And we come back to you and you say, no, you know, it's not working out. The numbers don't work. We just want to leave. We can basically buy those cars if we wanted to at the time. So at any point, a year from now, five years from now, you decide that this
So if any point, a year from now, five years from now, you decide that this program isn't right for you, there are no contractual obligations for us to stay here. And the option would be for us to either buy those vehicles, or we go back to what we used to do and do the one car a year.
How many are you guys thinking about right now? Just, just an idea, because I know there's a lot of guys that probably would like to have a new car.
That's probably a question for the chief to answer a little bit. I know, I can give you a little financial standpoint.
Why don't you give us the finance first?
With.
It's their budget. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Correct.
I, I think, I admire you guys stepping up to the plate and, and looking at new ideas and, and bringing this to us.
So, right now in their budget, they spend almost a hundred thousand dollars each year that are charged to the police department for the equipment fund. So that includes the replacement of the vehicles and everything else. With this program, they could easily start with probably nine to ten cars and still pay that same amount. So you're talking about almost an entire fleet, and maybe it's not something we look at for a police chief car, something that's not pursuit-rated. But we can get started in a small way with this department, see how the program works. And if it is successful, then we can always make the decision to branch out and use it for City Hall, or if Public Works wants to hop on board after they kinda see how it works and everything.
This water car issue.
That's concerning.
Yeah, that, that does concern me. Did we buy that through Emmert originally? Or through?
It was a state bid. It was a state bid car. But it's one of our newer ones.
So it could've been from any place.
That's why I'm, I guess, disturbed, it's one of the newer ones.
You just never know. I mean, there, there could be so many, there's so much.
Because I'm thinking, we're gonna need those newer ones for quite a while still, even with nine.
This also gives us a flexibility to select different vehicles if needed. Officer Hartless recently hired six foot six, six foot seven. And not to be funny, but, right, to be sitting in a car for, for eight hours is problematic for his well-being and health. You know, so if we needed to, you know, to lease a, a, a larger vehicle for that purpose, or be flexible and we go, okay, for the next go-round, we're gonna lease a pickup truck for whatever reason, and then determine, we don't need it, or it just gives us more options to, to, to mend with the, the time, the changing of times, or whatever we deem it necessary.
So to the gentleman from Enterprise, if we, if we happen to get a lemon, because it does happen, what do you, what do you guys do to resolve those issues?
So, as you can imagine, we have three good relationships with manufacturers, because we buy the most of every. We buy the most of every vehicle possible. The reality is, and I told these guys the same thing last time we met, you'll, you'll buy five new vehicles. One will perform way better than you've ever seen in your life. One will be under what you thought it would be, and three will perform pretty much the way you, you wanted them to. We always go to bat for all of our clients as far as warranty goes. I think we saved our customers over twenty million dollars last year in what we call goodwill warranty, which is repairs beyond the warranty standpoint. The reality is, the leaky car thing is probably hopefully once in a ten-year issue. But it does happen. It's part of owning and operating a fleet. I think outside of that one issue there, you could probably go through the entire city's fleet and go to every single vehicle and identify one repair that you probably didn't want to do to that particular vehicle. So while we're, we're starting and, and having conversations about police units, there's an opportunity for the entire city's fleet at some point in time to kinda dip its toes in the water. And I can guarantee you right now, there's a handful of vehicles in your fleet that a department head would say, I wanna replace that today if I had the opportunity, but doesn't have the funds to do so. And so, there, there's just, this conversation goes deeper than just one particular vehicle that had a, a, a leak issue is what I'm getting to, so.
But going back to this one particular vehicle that had a leak issue.
Yeah.
If it happens, it's one of them that we get from you, then do you switch it out?
So we.
Do you guys take responsibility for that?
We're not the dealer, and we never wanna come off as a dealer. We're a fleet management company. So we help you buy the vehicle, but ultimately what vehicle you buy is, is up to you all. I can provide you a Ford, a GM, and a Chevy option for a police unit, but if you pick the Dodge and happens to have issues, you would have to go back to the dealership for warranty work.
And you'd advocate for us?
We'd advocate for you, correct. But I can't guarantee you that we, you know, if it's such a huge issue and we need to buy you a new vehicle, then yeah, we can always help you sell that vehicle for you. We'll do the best we can to sell it for you and buy you a whole new one. And again, you're not stroking a check, of course, so just lease payment for lease payment.
So you guys are an intermediary.
I'm just sitting here thinking about gas mileage too. That's a huge oversight that we're not talking about.
One of the great things about Ryan's program is the tracking that you, you really get. And it's something that I don't believe the city has at this time. When somebody goes to fill up at a gas tank, we know who that person is, we know how much gas they got. They're entering the mileage of what that car is, so we, and it's reported in real time, basically, on the website. So that we can track and Ryan's team can track as well to say, alright, this car is getting eight miles to a gallon, you know, it's time to get rid of it. So that analytical data that I use to kinda estimate when cars are gonna be replaced right now, doesn't exist. So it's kind of based on what, what our mechanics look like as far as, you know, when they think a vehicle needs to be replaced.
And so, all our oil changes and stuff could still be done with our local, local mechanics as well.
Yeah. Counselor Carlson, to answer your question, I think, that you had asked before about retention and attraction and, and one of the things that we do every day is, as, as an officer, when I'm looking to see which department, what do they have, what do they have to offer? If you have fresh equipment, that, to me, lets me know that that department is being proactive and making sure that their officers have everything that they need. When we have a program such as what Enterprise is proposing, that is a huge attractant to many people. That could be the deciding factor between somebody that's, and, and sometimes it's something is, it seems small, but it's really big.
For a policeman, for a policeman, unlike a lot of jobs, it's their office, it's where they spend a lot of time. And it's not, not just about a safety, it's about respect for, from your employer. You know, if you go to work for someplace and the internet doesn't work and your chair squeaks and all this stuff, you're like, they don't care about me. But, you know, that kinda thing, you, you can still do your job, but it definitely is a driving factor, I would think.
Quality of life.
People looking for other positions versus, I'm happy here, they care about me here, I matter.
And take that one step further. You assign a vehicle to every officer. That car, at the end of its lifecycle, or whatever long, whatever period that's gonna be, that vehicle will be taken care of much better than one that you're having to share, that's a fleet vehicle. I can tell you when I was in the Air Force, my airplane looked better than my personal car. That thing was cleaner and it had a lot more grease on it, you know? So it's, you just take care of the things better. And I, I'm not sure if that's a psychological issue or just how it is, but it's, you, you really do maintain your cars better. So, having new cars and then having one that's assigned to you, that's huge. And that is, that is a very significant.
But only having two good cars probably means they get beat up.
Well, everybody wants to drive the new ones, is what ends up happening. So you get two cars that are brand-new with massive miles, and the rest of them, they're just kind of.
So how big is the fleet right now?
Our fleet, patrol cars, we have about nine.
Ryan, you said you'd advocate for the council or the city purchasing of new cars. Do you, does Enterprise get any kind of break on the price? Would it be different than us going out and looking for new cars? Are we better off with your company advocating for us?
I'll give you.
And tell us why.
Yeah, I'll give you a good example. From a price standpoint, you can buy pretty much any vehicle for the same price we can buy, because we're buying on your behalf. So the manufacturer, when you do a state bid, for example, a manufacturer's basically telling you that you have an identification code with that manufacturer as a government entity, and here's what our rebates are for government entities. It's no different than what we're doing. However, we might be able to offer you different options that you've never really looked at, because again, I'll give you an example. With another county we just brought on board, they had a very common policy of domestic only. They went GM or Ford and that was it. We offered a Nissan Pathfinder for them, because they wanted a Ford Explorer. And Nissan Pathfinder was three thousand dollars less in acquisition cost than the Ford Explorer. It's the same thing, does the same exact job, it gets the job done, same tool, but it's a less expensive option than the Explorer was. Their board approved it and they moved forward with that. They had that policy in place for twenty years before us. And they would've continued to do that without looking at different options. So while I didn't buy a Nissan Pathfinder less than they could, but we brought that to their attention for the first time in twenty years and saved them money on that particular unit. So, we're always going to bring that information to your attention on a yearly basis when you're doing your budget, when you're planning. It might be Ford Explorers next year, it might be Dodge Durangles this year, so that's part of our, our program. We view vehicles like a tool. It's no different than the TV screens or the computers you have in this room. They all have a lifecycle, and vehicles are no different than that. And so, we're just trying to give you the best tool for the job.
Thank you.
Ryan, can you just briefly talk about the RFP process?
Yes.
That Enterprise won, just to let them know?
Yeah, so Enterprise, I mean, we're, we're really aggressive in the government industry right now. We just won a national RFP for a, a national co-op called Sourcewell. City of St. Helens happens to already be a member of Sourcewell, from a procurement side of the fence. So we bid it against about nine other fleet management companies and we won for fleet management services specifically. So you can piggyback off that, when I even piggyback, you're already a member of Sourcewell, so it makes it nice and easy. From a procurement standpoint, you have an option there to use that RFP as, to qualify. We also use a company called Tips, or an organization called Tips. But since you're already members of Sourcewell, it makes it real nice and easy.
So it makes it really easy just to step into this, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I, I like the program. I, I like what I'm hearing. I, I'm, just curious, so seventy-one percent of our vehicles are ten years or older. Are most of those the police?
No, that's, that, in fact, that entire slide was not. When we do, when we typically do an actual analysis of a fleet, police units are so unique.
Yeah.
It's hard for me to go, this police vehicle costs X without knowing all the equipment they put into those. Whereas a half-ton pickup truck, if I, if you happen to have a toolbox on it, it's not gonna affect our analysis that much. So, typically start there.
So our Public Works is not here right now. They're actually at a conference. So, I'd really like to talk to them a little bit about this too.
I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, we did briefly chat with Steve and Neil to let them know that Enterprise fleet was gonna come doing this and what it was about. And like I said before, we were specifically looking at this to get, if we were interested in getting started with this, it would be with the police department.
Sure.
See how the program grows. And then if there are other departments that are interested, they could always join later.
I think that's important, because there's some constant effect in this. And the, the effect is with our maintenance crews over in the maintenance building, it, it will affect them drastically in terms of their workloads lightening up and finding other opportunities in the, in the city for, to keep their, to keep them busy and keep them working. So I see that as an effect down the line, somewhat of an effect. So, I like to make certain that we deliberate cautiously with this. Once we go past the police arena, I agree with the mayor. When he says he feels that this is a great program for the police, I, I, it sounds very good. Sounds very effective and very efficient. So, just before we move into Public Works, and those Public Works, some of those Public Works vehicles are, don't get a lot of mileage on them. They just kind of go from one park to another many times, and that's about it. So, I'd like to make certain that we're doing the right thing with Public Works and we're honoring our department heads in our deliberation.
Yep, yep. That's why I just wanted to make them aware of the presentation, if they wanted to opt-in on it. I think we're all in a kind of an agreeance. Keith, you ever see the police department?
I've already had a heads up on this.
You've already had a heads up, okay.
So, the next step, if, if you would like to move forward, would be us, for us to finalize a contract. It is actually with our attorneys right now. I think Cindy is looking over the contract just to get an eye view of what it is. So if, if you give the okay, she would be, be able to finish that work and, and take a look at it finally. And she has it, she just hasn't looked at it yet, so that was kinda like, kinda put this on your calendar softly. We're gonna talk about it on Wednesday, so. So if you're okay with moving forward, I'll give Cindy the okay to review the contract. And then we would come back to you, probably at the next meeting or so, to authorize a signature for that.
Well, that brings up a question. Is Cindy our go-to attorney for kind of in-house things this way now?
For small things, she always has been for contracts review, something smaller. If it's a larger contract or anything bigger, then we obviously go to Jordan Ramis or another special, specialty place. But for something simple like this, it's a pretty standard contract. And like Ryan mentioned, there, they've already won the national RFP process to kinda piggyback on the contract that's already been negotiated.
So if it's more cost-effective and safer and provides tracking that we haven't had in the past, I think it sounds like a good idea.
Okay, we'll have the contract for you probably at the next meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Ryan, nice presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you to the officers for coming in and.
Thank you.
Listen, giving us.
Thank you for being here.
It's hard to do it without their feedback.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on. First quarter communications report from Crystal.
So this report covers July through September of two thousand eighteen. I'd like to point out on the workload indicators that we are up a lot of activity compared to previous years. And that is with me being gone for most of September as well. We typically average about thirty-five press releases a year. We were already at twenty-three for a quarter, this first quarter, and we're now already up to twenty-seven halfway through October. I think a lot of that has to do with some of our newly monthly recurring programs that we have now. The Arts Commission has a monthly, non-official meeting with the public that they do, that they have requested press releases for monthly. The Chief of Police just launched the First Thursday Program, so that's another monthly program that we are needing to do press releases for. In addition, we also obviously, in gearing up for Spirit of Halloween Town time, have a lot more posts going out on social media. And we introduced the library with a Twitter and Facebook account.
And you've been doing press releases for the recreation program too, haven't you?
For?
Recreation program, haven't you?
Yes, and we have a quarterly or, I, I just talked to Shawna recently about the guide that we're gonna put out. And whether that is three times a year or four times a year, but yes, we now have a recreation program that requires a lot more advertisement, particularly on social media with their events. If you're interested in looking at all the social media stats, they're in the packet for you to review. The only thing I, thing I do wanna point out if you review them is you will see a very large jump in the police department's Facebook following this last quarter.
Wonder why?
Lip Sync Challenge. That is why. And then I just wanna review quickly the activity highlights for the last quarter for some of the event coverage that we did. Yes, we have a recreation program now that we try to cover quite frequently. Shawna at least has requests a couple times a week for events that she needs more sign-ups for, or cancellations for, or a change in the programming, like date, time, or location. We had the Lip Sync Challenge video that went viral, the If I Were Mayor lunch. The Pizza Citation Program, obviously all the Thirteen Nights on the River concerts, which went back to weekly instead of bi-weekly or bi-monthly concerts this year. The St. Helens Public Library had their Summer Reading Challenge and Summer Library Challenge that had very good attendance, particularly the children's events, that we tried to get some video and more pictures for this year. We had the Second Annual Citizens Day in the Park. And quite a few new hires in length of services that we covered this last quarter for employees. Media inquiries had already started last quarter for Spirit of Halloween Town. We updated our CGI community videos that are hosted on the main page of our website. We contract out with third-party that do those for, at no cost to us. And then they go out and seek advertisements in the regional or local community to cover the expense of the program. We had more riverfront and waterfront update meetings that we advertised, as well as First Thursday Program, a lot of press releases, as I already discussed. And in the future, mark your calendars for already, we're thinking about the tree lighting and Christmas shifts, which will be on December eighth. The next First Thursday Program will be on November first, and it's an active shooter presentation for the public. So, your local average citizen, how should they respond to an active shooter situation? On December sixth, Brianne Mares, who is our Crisis Intervention Team Coordinator, will be doing a presentation on that program and the resources available to the community with that. And we've already partnered with a community. And we've already partnered with a community organization for the April two thousand and nineteen program, which will be the Amani Center that helps us out with that. I'm working with Gretchen currently on a strategy for improving the library's following on social media. So we'll be working more closely on that through the winter. We should have a winter recreation guide coming out, I believe sometime in December is the goal, or January. I was talking to Shawna this week about that. So we will be working to promote winter events to the community. We have a waterfront redevelopment update meeting tonight at six PM. So everybody should attend that. But additionally, as we move forward and if and when things are finalized, we'll have more information out on redevelopment efforts to the community. Obviously, we're in the middle of Spirit of Halloween Town, so that takes up a lot of time. And I.
Nice job, by the way.
Thank you. Nice driving, so that I could take that shot.
I go, Susan, is Crystal still on the truck? She goes, she's on the truck.
There might have been one or two close calls.
Settle stops?
Yeah. And as always, I anticipate when we go into the wintertime that we have some weather messaging that always comes up with frozen pipes if we have a snow or ice event. We usually put information out about that. Hudson, when they can't do garbage pickups, we help message that information. Are there any questions?
Yeah. I don't know if this question, or if it's more of a comment, but I'm going door-to-door. I want to get every household, talk to every citizen that I can in our city. And I've just about got to every household. So on the way, there's, I always have, you got any questions for the city? Or comments or anything? So I've encouraged feedback. And what I'm getting back, it's not critical, but it's hard for me to answer because I really don't know. I don't go to some of those social media sites. But there are a lot of people that do, and that's where they get their information. And they don't bother to go to our website. They're on social media. What do I say to those people? And how could we address that?
Address not going to our website and only getting news from social media? Or not going to social media and getting news?
I don't, say that again?
So are the comments that they're only getting news from social media and they're not going to our website or elsewhere to get information?
I don't think that they are, I don't think they really go to our website as much as they depend on certain websites that carry messages that I think are not.
Might not be accurate?
Are not accurate at all, or whatever.
I understand.
How can we combat that? Or do you think that that's a problem?
Of course, it's a problem.
I certainly hear of it. Is there any solution that we have or that you have as our communications person that could address that problem? Do you, and this is something maybe that, it doesn't mean to be critical, okay? I'm not being critical, I'm just hearing it as a concern amongst our public.
I think you cover everything. Here's what I hear Doug saying, because I know, I understand Facebook, is you cover everything. I don't think people, you know, the original push gets out there and you have to keep pushing stuff on Facebook. You just got to keep pushing. And we know that you put it on there. I think that's what he's talking about, probably a lack of, they're saying they're not seeing it.
Well, it's a lot of energy, I realize, because it can get into give-take and kind of that kind of social thing that, whatever. But I heard the word immediacy several times. And that means possibly people in our audience or over our television audience sees what's happening and they immediately go to social media. So it takes our communications some time to digest what happened in council meetings and then get on to the social media. So that there's this time overlap that people are getting a certain kind of slant on what's going on in our city, and then they form opinions. And those opinions, then that puts us on the defensive.
I was wrong. I see what he's saying now.
I think that is not a problem that is exclusive to St. Helens. It's a national and it's a world problem right now. If you have followed any of the media coverage internationally about Facebook and other social media giants kind of getting into hot water with the public about interference with elections and fake news and Russians paying for ads on Facebook that are inaccurate. I think it's more than a local problem. How do we combat that? We continue to keep trying to push information out on our channels. We can pay to advertise it more than we do right now. We have a certain budget that we allocate for advertising things on social media that are targeted to our public, that we can then help guarantee that they're more likely to see and see that source coming from us. I always try to link back when possible to our website so that people can go there for more information. One thing that I've looked at in recent months is reintroducing a mailing, so paper copies of things going out to the public again. A very, probably like a third of the size of the Gazette that we were currently doing, scaling that back a lot, and then delivering it in their water bills so that they're getting something delivered to them, that they don't have to go onto social media. And you hope that their Facebook metrics make it so that they see our post.
Well, my best reaction to those kinds of comments was, I'll bring it to a council, we'll discuss it. We'll discuss these issues. That's what we're kind of doing now. But, and I said, you know, my comments back is, could you imagine how much this is going to cost the city to bring a communication specialist to our council meetings and to all council meetings that are very important? And try to get that word out right away? I said, you know, that's a full-time job.
It is.
Totally a full-time job just doing that. So that's been my, that's been my reaction back. At this point, it's not cost-effective until we get to be a huge, huge city, I would think. But anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
I don't know. How much does it cost? I would like to see something presented to us, how much it costs to push stuff more and maybe even try that for a little while and see if it actually does what it says it does. Because I think it does, but sometimes you don't know.
I know it does sometimes. I mean, as far as we paid to boost some of the earlier waterfront events that had really high attendance. I try to balance it out, though. You know, I have a limited budget for all of communications. And I'm trying to cover not only city hall stuff, but we've got library, we've got police.
And it would take more hours.
So, well, what I'm saying is with everything the city's got going on and potentially is going to be going on, a lot of stuff, a lot of things going on. And maybe it would behoove us to have you bring us back this little financial report. If we have to up that, then we have to up it, because it serves all of our departments, every last one of them.
Yeah, I can look at that. I can play around with the targeting and range of particular posts to bring you back a report that shows you kind of what you get for your dollar value.
Do we have a Twitter account?
We do. Every department.
How many followers do we have there?
Our Twitter account isn't followed as much as other places.
Is that a faster and easier way to get information out?
Well, certainly, it's, it just depends. St. Helens has a different.
Especially if we had people, more people follow it, so you're getting instant news here.
Right, and Twitter has sort of a better metrics for showing people that. The problem is, we sort of have a different demographic in St. Helens than the average Twitter follower. Like Twitter's more of an urban, younger.
We have an older group out here. Okay, you can say it.
Let me, we have one thousand three hundred and ninety-one followers on our city's Twitter account, eight hundred and eighteen on the police department's, and we just launched the library's that has twenty-five.
And I think your letter in the water bills would cover that demographics.
Yes, yeah.
So maybe look at, compare to the Facebook. Those things or something like that?
Right.
Did you want to compare that to the Facebook metrics?
Yeah, I mean, Facebook's massively larger. Our city's Facebook page has seven thousand six hundred and fifty-seven followers. The police's page has six thousand four hundred and thirty, and the library's has two hundred and fifty-three. The library is new, yes. All of their social media is new.
Yes, so bring us something real soon about, for pushing that.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe some suggestions.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, first quarter financial report, Matt.
All right. So I'm going to breeze through this a little bit. Hope you get back on time, but don't be afraid to jump in if you have any questions or comments or anything. So I have all the data in front of me. Overall, everything is looking good. That's why you have a big thumbs up on the first page. I'm going to jump down to the second page that Kathy already has on your screen here. The general fund revenue is right at about fifty-five percent, which is abnormally high. The reason that is so high is because of the building permits, mainly from the school projects that are going on right now. So we've received a lot of revenue from that source. If Kathy can scroll down just a little bit farther to the second graph there, you can see a chart or a chart that explains some of those categories that we look at. Property taxes are very nil right now, just because you're probably just getting your property tax statements right now. So around November, December is when we see a huge spike up in those property taxes. And the charges for services are things like your building permits, as well as mainly your general fund support service charges. So those are the charges that we charge out to Public Works, the Street Fund, all the enterprise funds for administrative work. So that is a big portion of the general fund revenue. If we start looking at departments, normally what I'd like to see is departments at around twenty-five percent right now for expenses. Most of them are. The main reason some are a little bit high is because there are all departments that have IT fund charges as well as equipment fund charges. So those are charges that I do in July at the beginning of the year. So it kind of bumps up the statistic a little bit. So if you see departments that are thirty, thirty-five or so, that is the main reason why. The city council department, that's forty-two percent. That's mainly because you've gone to a lot of trainings just recently, so. But overall, there are no departments that I'm really concerned about at all right now. The highest one was the city hall non-department that is about seventy-one percent. The main reason for that is because we have a large insurance expense that is shared among the general fund. So I put it in non-department, and that's about seventy or eighty thousand dollars of, I think it's two hundred or so thousand dollars that we pay for insurance every year. So it's a big portion of that. I'm going to jump down to special revenue funds. Visitor tourism fund, community development, the community enhancement fund, and the street fund. Visitor tourism fund is about forty-six percent. It's mainly a lot of, some of the Halloween money we've seen, as well as the hotel and motel tax transient fees. Community development is only at twelve percent. That's mainly funded through grants that we expect to receive throughout the year, as well as the timber harvesting that we haven't seen yet. So that will pop up over the next few months. Community enhancement has a lot of smaller projects that have to do with the library. It is also where the police department has one of their grant positions, Brienne, for CIT. So the grant expenses and revenue are in the community enhancement fund. The street fund receives most of its revenue from state gas tax as well as reimbursements from STP funds for projects that are going on. So we anticipate that, for all these funds, to be right at their mark. And so everything's looking pretty good right now. I'm going to jump down to the next page, which is the enterprise funds. Right now, we are at about sixty and eighty percent of revenue received for almost all of them. That is on purpose because I budgeted very conservatively on revenues for these enterprise funds. Wanted to make sure and not overestimate, so it's better to underestimate it in these categories. The next page are the internal service funds. These are basically the charges that you see in each department for the equipment fund, IT fund, public works, operational funds, and the facility major maintenance fund. So revenue should always be about a ninety-nine, a hundred percent, depending on how Excel decides to spit out a graph. The public, the facility major maintenance fund, if Kathy can scroll down just a little bit, that is only sitting at thirty-one percent, mainly because we're waiting for one of our bonds to close. And for the site investment account that we have, those three million dollars, we have a bond that's going to be closing and probably going to be cashed out here in the next few months. So that money is the five hundred thousand dollars for the park projects. So we're waiting for that to get closed out, and then I will transfer that money into the facility major maintenance fund. And jump down to STCs. As you can see, most of the revenue is pretty much all received this year, and that is strictly and mainly due to the school projects that have been going on for the last several months. And now we're starting to see that revenue come in. We don't have very many expenses, and as always, I always try to budget to spend everything in SDC funds. Most of the time, we never do, but it's always at least appropriated so that if something does come up, it's available to use when it's needed. So probably my favorite page to talk about is probably the next graph down. Can you scroll down one more? This is the one I always harp about, which is the single-family resident permits issued. I do have to update this. The number that you see for so far this year, three, is actually five. Heidi, you found a discrepancy in our software system versus our spreadsheets. So that number is actually five as of so far this first quarter. So I included a couple additional pages. These are a couple pages from our site investment accounts. It gives you kind of a rough idea of when we receive interest payments for these investments that we have. You can, if you look on the top column in May two thousand and nineteen, you'll see a million dollars or so that will be callable then. That is part of that five hundred thousand dollars that we anticipate reinvesting into our parks program that will be transferred. So in May, when that closes, then I will transfer the money into that fund to be used. But on a rough estimate, we roughly see about six, seven, eight thousand dollars each month or every other month for those site investments that we have. I do want to jump down to the last page, though. And I know it might be kind of hard to see. There is a graph towards the middle of the table that shows the portfolio, the two-year treasury, and the LGIP. When we did investments this last couple of years, kind of a mix of investments of timing, they were all projected to beat the pool account percentage, which at the time was one point four-five. When, if you take a look at it right now, the LGIP has actually increased their return to two point two-five. And so it created a little bit of an anomaly, so to speak, where this three million site investment account is now earning less than the pool. So as we start to close out some investments, interest rates have risen again. So there are investment opportunities that I will look at to anticipate beating the pool in the future. But as of right now, you may have a decision to make if you want to just reinvest some of this site account back into the pool account because you will earn more money that way. It just kind of depends on what options are available when we decide to reinvest. So just keep that in mind and know that I am looking out for it. So when it does come due, we'll take a look and I'll get your opinions. Any questions? That's kind of the extent of the financial report.
No, good job getting us on track. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to hear from Jenny. Okay, I'm gonna hear from Jenny, uh, review request for proposal for wayfinding signage.
So, um, this project is really exciting because it's been, um, three years in the making now, um, which is kind of my, I've been here for about four. Um, so ever since I've started, it's been a priority of mine. Um, so it started with, um, the Travel Oregon grant to do the signage plan. Um, and that was back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And then we finished the plan and then reapplied to actually implement the signage in that plan, um, in seventeen eighteen. Um, so now here we are finally, um, doing our request for proposals for sign fabricators to actually get the signage installed. Yeah, so that's on the agenda for authorization tonight. Um, I did want to show really quickly, if you can pull up the RFQ. Um, I just wanna show the scope of work, so what will actually be installed. So if you'll scroll to the first attachment. I think it's page three of that, yeah. One more. Yep, keep going. A little bit, that one, yeah. So this, um, the wayfinding plan only looked at three routes and we're actually gonna install all the signage recommendations with this first phase of implementation. Um, so our grant was for seventy thousand and the city is matching that with some in-kind funds and cash match. Um, and we're gonna do three of the larger vehicular directional signs. So those have the basalt base finish. Um, and then we're doing twelve on-street directional signs and seven on-street confirmation signs. And those are mostly focused on Saint Helen Street, Columbia Boulevard and First Street. So that was like the highest priority route. So getting people from the highway through Holton to the Riverfront District was our priority. Um, and I'm working with Sue on, you know, fine tuning those locations and, um, with Neil for installation of our part. We're doing, um, in-kind installation on the ones with just the poles and then we're having the sign fabricators install the larger ones because there's an actual basalt finish that, um, you know, Mason actually has to install. So, uh, that's what the RFQ is, or RFP rather. Any questions about that?
On a wayfinding, on the, on the signage, um, when our urban renewal program kicks in, um, is this planned to stay in place, uh, for our plans for urban renewal and possibly Main Street?
Yes.
Program, or will they be pulled up, moved and then put back in? Or tell, was there any talk about that or any thoughts about it at all?
So the way urban renewal relates to the signage program would just be that it's a funding source for future signs. Um, and you'll see in the next presentation on the Riverfront Connector Plan, um, they made recommendations for, for other priority routes for signage. So we'll have another plan in place and then that means we can apply for more funding for Travel Oregon or use urban renewal. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
What was amazing through this whole process is they, they started out with, um, marine basalt or wood and we ended up with all three through the whole process.
Yeah.
That was our options was to pick one of those and through public outreach, um, they came back with a little of everything. It looks wonderful.
Yeah. Oh, and we're also doing a kiosk. I forgot to mention. So we're doing one, um, off-street directional kiosk and I think we're proposing it on the plaza as our first one. Um, eventually there'll be one up at the visitor center as well, but for now.
Up by the chamber, right?
Yeah.
Are, are we using real basalt or a basalt?
It's a veneer finish particularly because of, um, potential for accidents alongside the streets. It's not recommended to use a full basalt rock if you run into it. It's dangerous.
It is dangerous.
Like a breakaway base, basically.
They won't do it again though.
Yeah, that's true. It's also a lot cheaper, um, to do a veneer finish. Yeah. I think, I think, um, we'll be happy with the results. I, I, yeah, I don't want it to look chintzy. Yeah.
We'll see how that turns out.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be curious if they could send examples of what that basalt finish looks like. Um, and that's part of the RFP process too, is we can say like, what do your products actually look like and, you know, fine tuning.
Definitely, because we will hear about it.
For sure.
Look like basalt around here.
Yeah, no, especially if it's next to basalt.
They could come see some of the old work that was done.
Yeah.
You know, courthouse and, uh, Spain's Hill going up and, you know.
Yeah, I'm really excited that the, the poles are actually really similar to the existing lampposts out here. So it'll be a consistent feel.
Yeah, I like that too.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jenny?
And I'm staying here for the next topic and I think Jacob is gonna join too.
Yep. Update on Riverfront Connector Plan.
So the idea is I think we're gonna kind of tag team this presentation. See if you can just chime in when you need. Um, so we're here for, um, council update on the Riverfront Connector Plan. As you remember, it's the TGM ODOT-funded, grant-funded corridor plan for an alternative route to the veneer site. So if you could go to the next. So, uh, here's a project schedule. Um, we're about three quarters of the way through. Um, this is the third council update. We've had two, three planning commission meetings, three public meetings and a number of advisory committee meetings to get to this point. So we're at the point now where we almost have a draft plan to present to you all. Um, and so next steps, sorry Kathy, I just wanna point out next steps. Um, we have one more advisory committee meeting, um, and then a joint planning commission council work session. Um, and then adoption pretty much after that. So by April twenty nineteen, we should have this plan fairly ready to adopt.
So as a primer for the council, where we're at is we're kind of getting to the finishing touches of the plan. What does the city want as far as these streets and intersections? Um, and so getting some feedback from you at this juncture on that, if you have some, um, will be important. And then the next phase, we start to talk about policy. Um, and some of my comments are to, a primer on some of those policy directions, which will make sense as we go along. What I'm hoping is to get some good feedback to help plant some seeds for the remainder of this process.
Um, so this is just our project area. This should not look new to you. Um, we're gonna kind of go through each segment one more time and just address any changes that have come up since our advisory committee meeting and our last council update. So the first segment is the existing South First Street. Um, so this is where, you know, the Riverfront District's core is. Um, and for this, we didn't have any changes from the previous presentation. Um, so it's, uh, if you go forward. So this is, um, the, basically the existing, um, streets, streetscape now. So we're maintaining the angled parking, maintaining the parallel parking, um, the planter strip and the sidewalk. So no changes here. Um, the only new thing is this sweet new rendering. Um, and then if you go to the next slide, there's another rendering of what, what that looks like up close with the plaza there on the right.
So one, one thing to note that's unique about this section is there are not dedicated bike lanes. Um, those little symbols you see on the left, those are share-o markings stating that, um, the bicyclists and automobiles share the lane. And that's to maximize, um, some of the on-street parking, which we know is particularly important for this older part of town, which doesn't have a lot of as much off-street parking. Um, another thing that's important to note that I wanna talk about with each section. Um, obviously, this area of town is fully developed already. And, um, typically when someone develops and there's existing sidewalk, we haven't required improvement to any newer standard. Unless the sidewalks are really beat up. Um, so advancing the plan in this section is probably gonna be city project driven. And I know, you know, engineering has talked about wanting to redo these sidewalks and, you know, they wanted this plan to go through first.
And to bring it back to urban renewal, it also identified this street section as a projects list for improvements. So it's worth noting. Um, so the next section, uh, segment two-one is the veneer site. So it's the new infrastructure connecting South First Street to Plymouth Street, um, and along, uh, the, uh, nature park there. So this is pulled straight from the framework plan. Um, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way. Um, it's got eight-foot sidewalks, the planter strip. And then instead of angled parking, we've, um, transitioned to parallel parking on both sides and a dedicated bike lane facility. Um, so we would transition from the share-o facility on South First to this, onto the veneer site. Um, and then you can see the pedestrian bulbouts, which is common for traffic calming.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, couple of things that were talked to me about in the community was concern about, um, both pedestrians and bicyclists accessing that hill at the corner. And what that would be like to protect that if there's traffic calming, if there's things that's kind of skinny the street down there so then people can get across.
Which, which corner?
Cause it transitions up to the hill by the, uh, Nob Hill Nature Park.
Oh, okay.
Where it makes the corner. And I came up and I talked to you about the ideas and I added it on the website.
Yep.
What was recommended to me. Um, one of the businesses is a business down here and they said, how many times have we been driving through Holton? And you're like, oh shoot, I missed that business and you're looking for a place to turn around.
Hmm.
And people are gonna be going up into a residential area seeking a place to turn around. So how are we, how is this plan gonna facilitate people being able to do that easily without it becoming just kind of a racetrack around that corner?
Didn't you kind of had thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, I mean, we talked about, um, traffic circles, which is different than roundabouts.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It's, I mean, they're done in, they're done in skinny, regular city-sized street. It's not a big giant.
Elaborate on the difference. Um, please. So a roundabout, and I'm not a traffic engineer and I don't have probably illustrations. Um, but a roundabout, which we'll see in our presentation, um, in a few slides, is meant to control the efficient vehicular movements and access of intersections. And I think we've all seen them because they're more common, um, throughout this Pacific Northwest.
And annoying.
And some people, and they're, they have a variety of opinions depending on the motorists behind the wheel. A traffic circle, a lot of times you'll see them at intersections. But you still may have a stop-controlled grid. But it provides a refuge for pedestrians or something for artwork. And a, a, a big difference between the two is scale. A traffic circle is, is much smaller. And what Council Carlson talked to me about is having some smaller traffic circles, um, within this section. One closer to the existing end of First Street. Um, one because our, this plan calls that as a gateway and that could be incorporated into some type of gateway feature. But also because, um, this street probably will not punch through to Plymouth immediately. We're expecting a phase development and, you know, phase one doesn't necessarily go the way through unless we make that part of the deal. So.
One thing that's like a traffic circle that might be, there's the tiny ones like that are on Twenty-Fifth. But there's a slightly larger one that you see at the end of the street end in, um, Seaside. Everybody's driven around that little circle where you look at the ocean. So I mean, it's kind of.
Like a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's like a cul-de-sac. But I mean, it has something in the middle and people drive around it. There's a sign in the middle of that. And so that's a large traffic circle, but there are smaller ones in neighborhoods that are being used in lieu of speed bumps to slow people down. Cause a lot of places, they get, police and fire don't want speed bumps. But traffic circles do two things. They don't just slow down, they slow down the motorists, but they also make it safer for kids across the street. And speed bumps don't do that.
And you can U-turn.
And you can U-turn. So it would allow people to go, oh shoot, I wanna park on the other side of the street without going all the way up into the neighborhood and trying to turn around in somebody's driveway.
So the discussion that we had is if there was a traffic circle, it could function as a U-turn when the street does not extend. Um, it could also potentially be incorporated into the gateway. And then once the street is extended, it still facilitates the U-turn. Oh, crud, I wanted to go back the other way. Um, but because of the gateway feature, you wouldn't necessarily have to take it away. Um, one of the next steps is the transition between, um, these just different sections. And so how our consultants are gonna propose the transition from this one to the one that goes up by the wastewater treatment plant. I don't know, of course, if you have any particular things that they would wanna look at, now's the time to let us know.
There was a lot of discussion in different hearings and I've heard a lot of discussions outside of hearings about concern on bicycles and kids coming down that hill and coming down from the nature park and meeting traffic. And so looking for traffic calming and refuges for other modes of transportation.
Today in Oregon, and there, uh, the traffic, uh, commission in Portland is looking at, uh, safety concerns for, um, uh, for handicap using e-transportation, electric, electric carts. And then which, what's, what lane are they going to use? How are they going to do it? Uh, guidelines and, and that. So as we move forward, there's gonna be more and more and more of that. That as we anticipate twenty years from now, what it's like and what our little transportation modes are going to be. Uh, there's a variety of them out there.
We're seeing a lot of scooters on Columbia Boulevard and on Highway Thirty of electric battery-powered personal transportation that are trans, traveling mostly in the bike lane.
As long as Jen asked that question, could I back up and ask some questions of what you already talked about? Or do you want those to come at the very end so we'd have to go back and review some of those slides at the very first?
I would prefer to have them at the end because I, I'm on a time crunch here. We actually have some stuff going at three and we're, I'd prefer to have them on the end. So write them down and have them, let's get to this presentation.
Um, the consultants also in considering the comments that Councilor Carlson put on the website. They didn't see that a, a true roundabout was required. We could include a traffic circle as a gateway or something. They wouldn't necessarily draw it in the plans, but they may make a comment in the plan. So if that's, if that's something that you're still wanting to be explored.
I just wanna make sure there's notation in there about the need that there will exist at that corner. To go through all of this and not end up regretting that quarter or for that transition.
Um, so another thing that I think we should discuss. So the framework plan suggested that this right-of-way be eighty feet wide. And, um, that, that recommendation is maintained here. And that width, as you can see, accommodates, you know, your separated bike lanes, parallel parking, extra-wide eight-foot sidewalks, a lot of great stuff. And this is a collector classified street, so we're anticipating based on our transportation plan, it's gonna have more traffic. We could potentially seek arguments and has been discussed amongst the committee members, maybe here, I can't remember. We're going to have, um, non-motorized passageway along the river. So why do you need to put bike lanes here versus the river? And so I think because we're gonna adopt this plan that asks for an eighty-foot right-of-way and if someone comes back and says, I want something narrower, we need to understand why we're doing what we're doing. And I think one of the questions for the council is what emphasis do you want for the passageway along the river? Is it for pleasure? Is it for through movements or is it for both? Now, our waterfront plan talks about, you know, having a fifty-foot swath dedicated for public access. But we can reduce that if the intent of our plans are met. And the intent being what I described, I think is an important element that plays into that. So that's, I think, something that we wanna have some guidance on from. I think this is common sense.
I think this is common sense. And bicycles are not just for pleasure. Bicycles are to get to a residence or a commercial outlet or a hotel, or whatever is in that riverfront district as much as a car. I mean, is the, a lot of people hop on a bike to get from point A to point B, not to go around and just, and just for a ride and recreation. So to answer your question, yes, that is important on a street.
I agree.
And it, and to take it out of that street and put it on a place where it's just for pleasure, like on a boardwalk or on the esplanade, is not a correct move.
I would just add, I've used the esplanade for transportation to a location, or even, I know a lot of people commute on the esplanade and they take it because it's an enjoyable commuter route.
And that's what you were asking, Jacob, was us to be, is it pleasure or is it through?
Okay, so you believe that the, the through movements should be incorporated on the street?
Yes.
I, I, I would say both.
Well, but the purpose being different.
Yeah. If, if you, if you emphasize them both along the river, you would probably need to think about how wide that is and is there one for throughway and for pleasure? It just.
Well, I don't want, I don't want to put an ordinance on it where if people want to ride a bicycle down a fairly good.
No, it's building, building based on intent, not, not enforcement.
Because I know you were saying primer policy earlier. I, I, you know, me being mayor, heard primer policy and I was like, okay.
Come up. For, for example, let's say, well, I don't know, let's be flexible. And so then as part of our policy, we want to make sure if this is allowed to be reduced at the expense of the bike lanes, that that's made up for along the river.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah. So, primer policy. Yeah, that's what you're referring to.
I would hate to see it.
Okay, so you're, you're talking probably about eight feet total in terms of reduction. Four feet for each lane, right?
Twelve. The bike lanes are six wide, so you're saving twelve feet and right-of-way width on a very valuable swath of developmental, you know, property to develop.
I would like the flexibility to work with the developer on this too as well. I mean, that's.
I think, I just, I think we need to include that flexibility in our code, but make sure that we understand that if we reduce these, and I think I've explained it.
Yes, yes, you have. Yep. Yeah, that's what we'd like, I think, as a census up here.
Yeah, I think, going back to even the ESTAT, then one of their primary recommendations was to be flexible.
Yeah.
Be flexible. And was, was their key messages. And we're looking at fifty feet in the water, eighty feet of a road right-of-way that's going to shrink that development footprint. I think we're going to hear some conversations about this very valuable land and how it's used and, and functions. Keep that air of flexibility.
Great. So moving on to the Plymouth Street section. So this area is very challenged by topography. So you'll see on the next slide. So this shows only certain sections are able to have a planter strip, and this kind of identifies approximate locations for that. So I want to go to the next slide and show, so this rendering shows a ten-foot multi-use path with the narrower eleven-foot travel lanes. In some areas, there can be a landscape strip, but it's, it's very limited because of that basalt outcrop there. So there's also the shared travel lane, a shero again. And that's for the downhill mo- motions, because sharing with a bike lane and a car, you can virtually go the same speed. And then uphill, you've got bikes shared with pedestrians.
And there, there's really nothing, I mean, the topography there, that's all you have available. That's it.
Yeah. And this transitions fairly nicely into the next segment. So along Plymouth Street here, it's kind of a neighborhood-oriented street. So we maintain that multi-use path along the side heading west, and then you've got the shared bike lane still there. The difference here is that we have a larger right-of-way, but there's still topographic challenges. So the street itself is actually not positioned in the center of the right-of-way. It's kind of jogged over. And there are some sections where a sidewalk might be warranted between South Eighth and South Tenth Street, but it's kind of not warranted. It's not worth the cost of, you know, grading that side. So this is virtually the same that you saw last time. And then there's a varied landscape strip there.
So before we get to this intersection, I just want to mention, so the last three sections we just talked about are all frontage improvementless. There's no sidewalks or anything like that. So the slate is clean. And a lot of it's going to be city project or developer partnership-driven. Along Plymouth Street, chances are it'll, it'll be city or partnership-driven, potentially development-driven, because there are some larger non-residential parcels. Of course, the city owns those, so it might be us anyways. And, and I say that because that's important when we look at some of the later sections, which have some improvements, and we have to consider some of the, the policy associated with that.
So this next intersection, I want to spend some time on because we've got a new alternative. So this is the Plymouth Street, Old Portland Road, and then a number of local access connections there. So these were the original four options, A, B, C, and D. C and D were the roundabouts. And then A and B were kind of ruled out because A didn't solve the mobility challenges on the site, and then B emphasized Old Portland Road, or I'm sorry, Plymouth Street more than Old Portland Road. And that doesn't match existing conditions now. And so there were a lot of conversations during the technical advisory committee meeting and public meetings about wanting to have equal emphasis on Plymouth Street and Old Portland Road, so that as the waterfront redevelopment project continues, there's some flexibility there on which route people take, whether they want to go south through the veneer site or go north to the existing downtown. And so rather than have kind of this interim solution and then have to redevelop the whole site again, we wanted to have one solution. And so the two, the one roundabout that had equal emphasis on both routes had massive implications to private property owners. And so we wanted to reduce impact to property owners, but still have the equal emphasis. So we challenged our consultants to come up with a new roundabout option, which is shown here. The lines don't show up very well on this presentation slide, but the digital version it does. So this is a new roundabout option that's centered on the property that the city already owns. So that triangle in the middle is something that we purchased. It's been a, been a little bit, a couple of years ago, a year. So this minimizes impacts to property owners, yet still satisfies the goal of, you know, minimizing the conflicts as you're pulling out onto Old Portland Road and minimizing those site distance issues that you have now. So we just seen these, these are not something that have been vetted by the technical advisory committee yet, and so there's still going to be some vetting between this option and the next option, which is a slightly moved-over version of that. But the main point is that they heard us, they want to do a roundabout here. That's probably going to be the recommended option unless council has any major issues with moving forward on this. There are some limits to access ways on the local streets here. So as Jacob says, you know, when you have a higher classified street like Old Portland, you have to emphasize mobility more than access. And so limiting that access is important for safety and for, you know.
Well, for safety purposes, absolutely.
Right. So there's some right-in, right-out options that will force people to kind of have to maneuver their way through the roundabout. But that's really the only way to solve the challenges out there right now.
That's a feeder street and that.
Yeah, exactly. So a local street is what we would call it versus collector or arterial. So I don't know if you have more to add to that, but other than just getting feedback from you that this is the right approach, we're heading in the right direction.
You're heading in the right direction. I, I was alarmed by Twelfth Street because our fire department and our police department, that's a main coming down. I was alarmed a little bit about that, looking at the kind of, the way it lined up even on the other, the one before this. And that's a little bit slightly different there.
And, and, and that's a good point, Rick. So there's, there's two options, as Jenny pointed out. And this option two does impact private property a little bit. And, and a lot of the feedback in the committee was, well, you know, you want to avoid that when possible. The advantage of this one is, and it may be unlikely that you would have semi-truck movements that are eastbound on Plymouth, that we want to take a sharp right turn to be, or excuse me, westbound on Plymouth to take a sharp right turn to be eastbound on Old Portland Road. The first one, which doesn't impact private property owners, the radius is insufficient. And so we'd probably have to mark that one, that that kind of movement wasn't required. But as our consultants point out, trucks are probably going to be, you know, coming from the highway into the riverfront district area and not need to make that kind of U-turn. And, you know, if they're savvy truck drivers, they'll take a different route. So this option, which has a little bit more private property impact, does give you a little bit more of that radius, but of course, has the impact. So I, I don't know if, at this point, you have an, uh, opinion on A or B, but that was just one of the things we had to think about.
I also didn't mention, so both options have a mountable island in the center. So the truck turning radius was considered for both. We would never propose something that didn't allow for truck access.
Rick, you are. So another thing that the consultants asked us about is, well, what kind of access control do you want on Twelfth? And, I don't know, whatever is the best practice. But I, I think they're missing the point on North Twelfth. And yes, the fire and police, and North Twelfth from this location is actually a collector's street. So I think one of the things we want to tell the consultants, unless you say, don't tell them that, is that we need the access to be appropriate for the class of the street north of that. So.
I think, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, I didn't think there would be controversy on that. Now, south of that is a local street. And as Jenny mentioned, you know, local street does access over mobility. And when you have a roundabout, you want to try to minimize the amount of options there are. Because as some of our counselors mentioned, they don't like them, and the more
I don't.
The more spokes you have in the wheel, the more crazy it is. So.
So I like three better than I did four.
But in this case.
I'm going to be looking for an alternate route.
So I think we would probably want to cul-de-sac Twelfth south of this cul-de-sac. So there's not direct access there. The access is from the grid. But the grid is kind of sketchy south of that. So if you wanted to get to Twelfth, you know, we'd have to, we'd want to consider the other routes for that. But that's kind of my feeling after thinking about this over the last few weeks, just because we want to protect the functionality of Plymouth and Old Portland Road.
Yes.
And I just, do you agree with that thinking?
We have an easement for a street right through here.
Yeah, we, we do have right-of-way. So I think it can be done. It just, we may need to look at some of the improvements that we have.
And then even about a half block down, which would be right about here, is the Boise, and that is the street right there where the fence is on.
Yeah, we have the right-of-way. You get into some wetland issues going east. Always have to think about my directions. West, there's right-of-way, and I didn't see anything, you know, it's just flat and grass. So the, the right-of-way is there. There just may be some paving.
I think it was called California Street on the old, old canvas maps that I seen about three months ago. Down here. California Street, right, right about here.
The original grids had different names.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you agree with that about blocking Twelfth off there and having it accessed elsewhere?
Could you go back to slide Kathy? There's also that right-in, right-out access too, that option.
On Thirteenth?
Yeah.
Twelfth.
Twelfth.
But Thirteenth, they loop together. They loop around. It's a U. Thirteenth and Twelfth actually go down to, trying to think, U-Matilla?
I think, yep, that's what it is.
Yep. And it, it, so they're, they do have an in or an out, either Thirteenth or Twelfth.
Yeah.
Yes. And there's also the U-Matilla.
So there's kind of the extreme version that Jacob's saying, which is cul-de-sac. Then there's the right-in, right-out, which is intermediate, and then there's the full access with the mountables.
Well, and didn't you say that the advisory committee hadn't weighed in yet?
Correct. So staff, it would be great to have engineering weigh in and.
And we did, I mean, we did get some comments from folks. And they didn't get into the Twelfth stuff as, as strong.
I just would like to hear more feedback from engineering and from the consultants, rather than us making that arbitrary decision.
I think they really need, maybe, uh, the engineers need to come out and actually look at it. Because how many times, I'm just going to say this because I'm in the construction industry, have you had a plan handed to you and you're like, what are you guys thinking?
Well, especially since this intersection came with this much text explaining what's going on. So, you know, I have to reread this probably four times before I even understood what all was happening.
Sure. And then especially in understanding of the surrounding streets and potential right-of-ways. I think that's highly needed in this, this area. Very sensitive.
Well, and also, and keep in mind the work session that you're having. If you have more questions about what's proposed, ask them. And that's their job to explain so that you understand.
Okay, good. And this is, this is the intersection that when we were working on the waterfront plan, it was like, oh, man, we need to figure this out. This is one of the main things that resulted in what we're doing now.
What do you think the timing is on this?
Actual construction?
Yeah.
Well, the plan's set for adoption in April, so not before then.
I, I think it's, it's going to, it's going to depend on how quick this area grows. If you have a bunch of people in here saying, this intersection is lousy, you need to do something about it, council.
That'll push it.
And then we go, well, look at this. We have a plan. We adopted. We know what we want to do. And if at that time, the urban renewal funds are flowing, then the planets will align and it'll happen. It's hard to say exactly when, but probably when we need it.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is looking at what could all happen down at the mill and the, and the lagoon and all that. You know, would be better to look from, you know, way out and say, hey, you know, down the future, we're going to have a lot better access or different plans or whatnot. Let's just let this lie until things look better. There's an easier way or a better way.
Well, in mid-year, we're going to be asking the council to adopt it, and you have to adopt it at some time.
And it's still a problem intersection, no matter what we do. I mean, it always has been.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The thing is, we, you know, we want to get something on the books now, so when it comes up. But let's say twenty years.
If you had a major road though, I mean, the, the traffic could virtually stop on that road if you had a different way in downtown.
Yeah, that's true.
We did do a study that showed that that was infeasible using our industrial property as an alternative route. That was found, that was.
Infeasible.
Yeah.
I believe that.
We explored it as part of something.
Yeah, actually, it's in the presentation tonight, so.
Okey-dokey.
So let me, let me state that my objection to roundabouts is a personal thing. I won't vote against it.
We, we won't hold it against you.
I understand the traffic studies show that it is safer.
So this has been the conversation through this whole process about these roundabouts. So I mean, in, in the planning commission, I've sat in on a few of these and listened and, and listened and commented. So, and I know we got at least two more chunks to go through on this.
Yep.
You okay? Yep.
So this next segment, I also wanted to spend some time. So this is from where we just were, the intersection down to Railroad Ave. That's the next segment. So here's the recommended section. It's got a two-way cycle track, which is an elevated cycle track from the roadway, two planter strips and a sidewalk. The change in recommendation from this diagram is the location of the cycle tracks. So they're actually going to be located on the inside of the landscape strip. And the question at our advisory committee meeting was, well, how do you separate the bikes then from the pedestrians? And it was the recommendation from our city engineer that you keep the cycle tracks at road level and elevate the sidewalks. That way, it's clearly a delineated path for the pedestrians. The cycle tracks are protected with the landscape strip, and then everything is separated and there's no potential for conflicts. So that's the recommended street section for this. Yeah.
Does that include the horses strip from again, to and from?
It's from that Plymouth Street intersection all the way to Railroad. It's from that Plymouth Street intersection, all the way to Railroad Ave. And it actually continues with that, with the minor difference.
Okay, so it does go across the bridge?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and what do you do with the bridge?
No, that's a good question. I don't...
Yeah, and, and, and the consultants brought that up, that's a potential choke point. So you either need a transition plan, or those need to be redone.
To take the cyclists off the highway, take the cyclists off the highway, put them with the pedestrians, because you have two pedestrian bridges already there. It works, if you do that.
On each, yeah, because they're already on that side. Yeah, that makes sense. And I think looking at transitions was part of their next steps.
And I, how, how major of a deal is it? I'm just thinking of Omsi and the Trillium, is that right? The Trillium Bridge?
Tillicum.
Tillicum Bridge in the Omsi area. And I never have any issues, yeah, all of a sudden I'm startled by a bike coming by, but I'd never have had an issue with sharing pedestrian traffic with bicyclists. So, I mean, are we really, is, is this really something that, I don't know.
Yeah.
It'd be a learning curve?
There is an issue with it.
Yeah, and I think people with strollers or other, you know, they're pushing around carts or something like that, too. It's an issue, or walking dogs. You just want that separation. Yeah, and, and it's based on statistics from traffic engineers that say, you know, this is safer.
Okay.
Yeah. So, did you...
Yeah, so this is, so I, I think one of the things I hear from the councils, "We want to make sure we have a transition plan for the bicycle bridges", and that makes sense. Now, this section, we get into a lot of industrial property, a lot of vacant lands. There's a lot of development potential, and we're starting to see some of that begin. And so a lot of these cross-sections, or a lot of these frontage improvements, you know, some are going to be city projects, especially along McCormick Park. But some are going to be development-driven. And for the most part, you know, you have large swaths without frontage improvements. But in this area, we do have almost 800 feet of curbed tight sidewalk along the sheriff's office. And it hasn't really been the city's policy to rip out perfectly good frontage. And so, you know, one of the things on our docket is for transitions between these segments. But I also think, just like we need transitions from existing bicycle bridges, we need it from existing frontage improvements as well. Such as in this case, the curbed tight sidewalks along the county. And I think that's going to be part of a policy, to make sure that, one, we have a plan that shows, tells us how we're going to make that transition, and it's clear in our code. That way, once we get to the development proposal, and we're like, "Well, what do we make this person do?" "I don't know. I don't like being in that kind of situation. I like to know exactly what we're going to do", so...
Sure. I'm for that.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know you're going to touch on a similar topic on the next one, okay. So this is the intersection of Castor Road and Old Portland. A roundabout's proposed here. This roundabout's, you could see the impacts are mostly on city property, not the private property to the north, because we own three sides of that intersection. This is not new. This is the same proposal from last...
This is a really large roundabout that could actually...
Yeah.
That will be able to handle any 18-wheeler.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, that inner, inner circle, the doughnut, is actually mountable.
Yep.
Mountable curb. So then the next one, this is the intersection of Port Ave. So their recommendation is to actually move Railroad Ave intersection up to the alignment of Port Ave. And then there was talk in the advisory committee about meandering that back to the existing right-of-way, because it would be cost inefficient to just continue a whole new road right next to an existing road. So this obviously has private property implications. It's fairly long-term planning, but it's ideal to have intersections that align with other intersections and don't have to do a weird jog. So this, this is the same as last time.
Yep.
So this intersection is kind of a tale of two cost amounts. The, the first one, you know, it's obvious why this intersection needs some fixing. It's got a lot going on. There's the railroad that runs through. You've got Old Portland Road that's very close, turning onto that. There's not a lot of room for queued traffic for turning right or turning left. And so the top one is an actual signalization, and it's pulling the, pulling the signal down away from the railroad to allow for queuing, proper queuing. And it's also got dedicated right-hand turn lanes and left-hand turn lanes. Obviously, that's the more expensive option and more probably longer-term option. The shorter-term option, you can't get the mobility standards you need on this intersection without having a center-hand turn lane. And so you'll see that there's a Long Gable Road. There's a dedicated turning lane there. And there's obviously private property implications there, because I think Hudson, Hudson's right there on the corner. But this changes the alignment to be a T from Old Portland Road to Gable, which is ideal. So nothing, nothing new there.
Does that get rid of the, the bad incline, though? The opposite incline of that curve?
The slope?
Yeah, the slope.
For what? Could it be a...
Yeah, this isn't looking at, I mean, we didn't look at surveys or anything. This is just purely conceptual at this point, but...
So this, this intersection has been one that, you know, our committees have looked at it and went, you know, there hasn't been a lot of, "Let's do this one versus that one." And so it's kind of been a head-scratcher. So our consultants were going to check with the railroad and ODOT rail to see what kind of input they had that may, you know, put the needle versus one or the other.
Definitely.
Yeah.
You know, there's been a fatality right here, a pedestrian being struck by a car. And then shortly after that, another one, just a year ago. So this is a very dangerous stretch of road, really.
Yeah, and you'll see on the next, next streetscape. So this is the stretch of Gable Road to the highway. If you want to go to the next. So this is virtually the same as what was proposed along that stretch of Old Portland Road by McCormick Park. The difference here is that you've got that dedicated turn lane, which is necessary to meet mobility standards. And there are a couple of sections that could have some planted medians. But our consultant said, "Not a lot", because you've got properties that are redeveloping and will need driveway access off of, and turning access off and into their properties. So there's probably not going to be a lot of planted medians along that section. Again, that one difference is that the two-way cycle tracks will be recommended to be on the inside of the planting strip with an elevated sidewalk and a cycle track at the street level. And I think Jacob wants to touch on that policy option again, just because there's some developed frontage improvements, fairly new along this.
Yeah, so similar that we have, you know, a couple of places where we have some existing curbed tight frontage improvements by the intersection of US 30 and the highway. And then we have about 400 feet of our transportation systems plan standard in front of John Jersey's place. And so, you know, we go back to those transition plans and policies. And the other thing that I thought about on this one was, if a cycle track is only so long before it's interrupted by a, either an existing frontage improvements or a bridge or something, does that make sense? For example, if, if you're only going to get 100 feet of a cycle track, is it, is, do you even want to put a cycle track in? Or should there be a forecasted guaranteed, you know, amount before that's implemented? And I think that's something we need to look at our policy, to say, "When we look at this cross-section versus one of our older ones."
So we have 80 feet here, though, right?
I'm not talking about length, not width. Yeah, this, this accommodates the width that, that we have. We have at least 80 feet along Gable.
Okay.
The overall theme from the consultants is that incrementally developing cycle tracks doesn't work. We can't do it per property. You can't just keep transitioning from old, old, you know, the side, curbed tight sidewalks to cycle tracks. And so the idea is, do, this is going to have to be a grant-funded, large project, where we actually go in and do a large swath.
This is a tough chunk for us as a city, because we have no sewer water at those railroad tracks. And you guys both know that, and it's going to be a very complicated issue. We do have sewer coming up the backside of the properties on Old Portland Road. It's something that we need to start thinking about as a council. Because there's easement for a street back there, too. I forget what street that is. But be, behind the fair building, and it comes across a creek. There is sewer there. But, yeah, we don't have no, no water sewer to, when our UGB does continue to grow out that way. Because right now, it's county property, and the reason it's county property is because nobody wants to put water and sewer out in there and open it up.
So I don't know if there's a question there, but...
No, I just, I'm just wondering how, I guess my question is, we're going to do all this, but we may be in there just hammering the crap out of that real soon. Excuse my language, but after, if we do not do the right infrastructure first...
Right.
So, so consider everything I talked about and making sure that street improvements are aligned with utility extensions, so they're not ripped out as a result of utilities.
Yes, yep, something like that.
Tear it up once.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's a complicated stretch. So this is the last slide, unless you had more on that. Okay, so this I am excited about, as I always am. I made sure to include in the scope wayfinding recommendations for this route. And so we got specific locations for signage, type and content. There they are. There's a fully detailed Excel spreadsheet of all of these locations. I just wanted to point out, one, so 26 is referring to an entrance sign along Millard Road and US 30. And I have been working really hard to get some coordination with ODOT and ODOT rail for an entrance sign. This is not a new topic for them. There was work back in 2012 that sort of fell on its face a little bit because of a denial, or the, the, ODOT rail basically said no.
It was on that committee.
We kind of hit a wall. And so I'm rekindling that with the Millard Road intersection redesign. As you know, Millard Road's being redesigned. And so I'm hoping to piggyback on ODOT's construction of that intersection and actually get utilities and a connection for an entrance sign there. Not sure if it's going to be successful, but I'm really, really trying. So that's all.
What about for artwork?
Well, the entrance sign is, the design's already created with the wayfinding plan, so it'll be for that. But, yeah, I think, you know, the ACC did two phases of artwork on the highway or gateway.
I have a question for you regarding the sign. Maybe it's quick, maybe it's not. I'm seeing a lot more things along the highway, not out here, but other places that are not reliant on utilities, but are more solar-powered. So they're not having to link into that. Do you think that that is feasible at this time? That something could be illuminated without relying on bringing power to the other side of the street?
It's the placement of the sign in general, like getting the permit to actually place the sign. Anything in the ODOT rail's right-of-way is challenging, which is unfortunate for us, because we have ODOT rail right-of-way that abuts the ODOT highway. So it's not a question of working with ODOT. It's a question of working with ODOT rail and the private operators of the rail and actually getting approval for the sign. That's where we're hitting the wall. And that's where we hit the wall back in 2012, too. And we're also kind of using the existing signage as a bargaining token. So, you know, there's two wooden signs that exist past Gable, which is an unfortunate location, because you're well within the city. But they're wooden, and they've been there for a really long time, and obviously don't look the best. And so trying to use that as a bargaining chip to say, "Hey, we'll get rid of some non-conforming wooden signs if you let us put this new nice one at this intersection that's already going to be torn up."
Yeah, the idea is that provides something unique to our neighborhood or our community. So if they're worried about a setting a precedence, you know, "Okay, well, there's a sign there now. We just replace it."
Yeah.
You know, the thing about ODOT, the railroad, is you have two walls to break through. You know, the first one is, you know, six inches of wood, which is ODOT rail. They own the railroad, but Portland and Western has an operation lease to use it. And so once you use your ax to get through the wooden wall, now you have a two-inch steel wall to get through, and your ax is already blunted from the wood. And that's the, the biggest challenge, it seems, too, is, is working with the railroad company itself.
We're getting some headway with ODOT, so the wood wall is kind of splintered, but the, the steel one is what we're working on.
Just, I know that when we talked about the entrance sign before, there was some citizen comment about not getting rid of those historic signs on the highway, but finding suitable places for them to be relocated.
Demo them, yeah, yeah.
Just to want anybody to get that idea.
Yep, totally.
You talked to ODOT rail about moving their switchbacks out there, past the Millard Road, too?
That'd be cool. Again.
Yeah, while you're at it.
Yeah, we talked about that when we were updating our TSP, because obviously that creates a lot of problems for us. And as we grow, it's going to just be more of a problem.
Is that the last one?
Yeah, we're well over our time, sorry.
I got a question. Did you, and I think this is important to try at some time, because I think there's an extreme safety issue with your diagonal parking, or with the diagonal parking now. And the diagonal parking is, is that you back out rather than back in. And backing out means that you, as a driver, have to see up the road. And if there's anyone next to you, you can't. There's absolutely no way. So you have to back your car out into the traffic until you can see up the road. And by that time, your car is backed out into the traffic. So if you back in, most people have backup cameras now, whatever, and whatever. But you drive past the area that you're going to back in. You simply look at it. And if it's a clear, then you just put your car in reverse and back in.
Yeah.
And then to back, then to pull out, when you pull out, the, the driver's compartment is already out into the street, looking to see if there's clear right-of-way or not. So you don't need to pull your car out in reverse blindly, not knowing what's coming down the road, whether it's a cyclist, and so if we're having a bicycle lane in there, or what. So the, the towns that I've been in, the back-end diagonal parking is so efficient. It's just getting used to it. It's just different. And that's, maybe that's a culture here that could never happen, because we've always done it that way. But it is safer. A lot, lot safer.
We had examples of that on Columbia Boulevard when we were talking about the corridor plan.
Yeah, so it was talked about quite a bit during the first corridor plan, and the consultants, you know, actually proposed it. And the overwhelming majority, I mean, there was some people that said, "Yeah, that, that's great. You know, it's forward-thinking." But most people were like, "No, we don't want to do that." And so, but the, the cross-section shows angled parking. The cross-section doesn't mean, "You shall do it exactly like this, or you will die." It's, it, it provides a guide. And so there's nothing that says we couldn't use that swath for angled parking to be back in instead of back out.
All I'm saying, it needs to be tried at some time in this, in this city, in a, in a, in the area where there's a commercial, where it's busy. So people can see that it really works. It really works very effectively in smaller towns. Squim is one. I'm not certain if Port Angeles has adopted that. No, they're all parallel parking.
So then it may be a matter of picking a place in town where we just temporarily stripe it like that as a test run.
Yeah, exactly.
Of course, Sue and Neil aren't here to see how they think about that. Okay, that's, it's a good week to do it.
Who wants to pass? Let's do it. Okay, any other questions for Jacob and Jenny? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, department reports. Chief Greenway.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murray. I'll make this fast, in the spirit of trying to move this meeting along. First and foremost, thank you for hearing the Enterprise Rental Car Fleet Rental. And special thanks to Matt Brown, who's spearheading this and to save money for our entire city. So Crystal touched upon our first Thursday's topics coming up, you know, with active shooter, the Run, Hide, Fight lesson plan from the Homeland Security Lesson Plan that our Fed used. And then coming up CIT, which is very important in December. I also like to just remind everybody on actual day to Halloween, October 31st, between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00, we have the Police Department's Trunk or Treat. That's spearheaded by Melinda Duran, and she is just yesterday taking calls. So again, we'll move it into the garage area if it's inclement weather. So I'd encourage all the residents to bring their children out and, and meet our canine dog, meet the officers. And it's just a fun-filled community event for everybody. Yesterday, had a meeting with the Columbia County Sheriff's Office and other department heads that we're talking about collaborative training efforts about an active shooter program. This is spearheaded by Columbia County Sheriff's Department and Hillsborough Police Department, who has a nationally-known... who has a nationally-known, um, active shooter training program. So, uh, I reached out to them and, uh, we'll be, uh, meeting in the future to come together, which is, uh, good timing, um, one with our topic next month for First Thursday, and two is that we've been, uh, incorporating the, the St. Helens School District into, uh, this program. So what I mean is that we have to know what the school district protocols are in case there's any type of event on their campuses that, uh, the, the responding agencies, not just St. Helens, but, um, Columbia County, Columbia City. Um, everybody's on the same shooting music and knows what's gonna, what's gonna happen. So I met with Scott Stockwell last week. And we're moving forward with that this Friday. They actually have a training exercise at the school that we'll be attending. And we're gonna continue to move forward to make this, uh, the safest school, school district in the nation. Among those lines, um, we, in July, prior to my arrival, Lieutenant Hoag was up here and talked to everybody about possibly transitioning from the Klatzkine Range that the, the Police Department currently moves, uses, to the Columbia County Sheriff's Range. And unbeknownst to me, um, that had to come back, but the legwork on that has been done. Uh, we do have an agreement, but I wanna make sure before we move forward, it's okay. We've checked with our insurance company. They're good with it. We checked with our, uh, contracted attorney, Cindy Phillips. She's good with it. She reviewed the agreement. I've talked to, uh, Chief Deputy Steve Salie, who's also talked to the Columbia County Commissioners, who, everybody's good with this, us transitioning from the Klatzkine Range to the Columbia County Range. Um, so we have all of our ducks in a row. We just need approval of, of city council. The reason it benefits us is, uh, both cost savings, because for our officers to be, you know, to travel hour and a half just to qualify, um, is, is kind of a lot of money that we, that we shoulder, that burden of all of our taxpayers when we have something, uh, about, uh, you know, a mile down the road. So the benefits, uh, cost saving, it would reduce our overtime to use the Columbia County Range. Two is that we wouldn't have far to go. Um, and what I mean by that, if something did occur here within our city limits, we'd, uh, have a better, you know, opportunity to respond and mitigate that, whatever, uh, happens. If we're an hour and a half away and we have our officers just qualifying, then that's, that's not good for our citizens. Um, another benefit is that, from my understanding, when they go to Klatzkine Range, it's just simply qualifying. There's a huge difference between qualifying and being within standards of what they have to keep their certification as peace officers in the state and training. And that's what we're looking to do. We can qualify at this range and do training, which, uh, will be better prepare our officers in, you know, like I said, down the road for any, any deadly force situations they may encounter. Hopefully, they don't. And also, we'd be able to train with those agencies locally that will be, will be assisting us on any events. And what I mean by that, if we're, we're the only, uh, agency using Klatzkine, they would, can't infuse important training that we need to with the Sheriff's Department. And, and so that's why I hope it's, you know, that you would, you would grant us the opportunity to, to transition to the Columbia County Range. I know there was concern because it's right next to a, a lead, uh, chemical plant, and there's been some discussion how the FBI doesn't use it for certain reasons. But I will tell you that, uh, it's been in use for numerous years and there's been absolutely no issues with any of the other agencies using it. Um, and it just affords an opportunity for our own agency to just take, take, take advantage of time when they need to train and, uh, in other areas, uh, building searches, you know, just, just good practice of training and police work that, that should be done. Um, so I have everything ready to go. I just need, uh, the council's approval to move forward on that.
So you're not concerned about the risk that was identified before?
No, I'm not concerned about it because the reality is any risk, and I, I'm not trying to sound, I think we risk our officers in an hour and a half drive more um, in, in their more, right, traffic and getting a traffic accident and going to a, uh, n- next to a chemical plant that has had no issues other than, uh, alleged smell. I, it wasn't here when that, that came up. But I actually toured the range myself, and there's no smell, there's no issues, there's a berm, and the range itself has protocols in place. If, you know, for safety reasons. My concern is that we're, we're sending our, our officers so far away just to qualify when we have an opportunity right here. Keep it local, keep our officers in the community. Um, so that's.
Well, and the camaraderie there, too.
There is a camaraderie.
I think it's huge that, yeah, absolutely.
Right. So we're, we're bridging those gaps, not that there was a, a large gap, but with the, with the Sheriff's Department. They were out here supporting us in Halloween Town on Saturday. Um, great relationships. Uh, we're gonna continue that. And this is one of the pieces of the puzzle to continue to move forward as, uh, a, a, a county, not just a community, um, to where we have to rely on each other to, to mitigate anything, you know, we, uh, across the county. Um, so this is just, like you said, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, you know, we're, it's, it's a relationships. And we need to bond and we need to know what everybody's doing. And we're gonna continue to move forward in this training, but this is just one part of the training.
And I'm sure this is supported by the grassroots of the force. Is that correct? I mean.
Absolutely, because this, this allows the officers more time to train, which actually saves our city. Because the more time they have to train, the more times they have to qualify, the less chance that there might be something done in error.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, and the only other, uh, issue we have, well, the Hillsborough, and then I'm working with, uh, Jetbox here and the other, uh, department head. We're revisiting a couple plans that were put in place in two thousand eight. One is the deadly force plan for the county that needs to be revisited, uh, because, um, we have now have body worn cameras that have to be inter- interjected into this plan and some other, uh, safe, safe, uh, safeties. I, I would say that, uh, to make sure that we, if we do, God forbid, have a deadly force situation in the county, that this plan covers everybody and everybody understands what to do. And also a major crimes team. Because if we do have a, uh, a violent crime here in the county, we have to have a response and not, like, let's just say, another agency, Scapoose, Rononia, they won't have the resources to, to properly investigate that. So we're coming together collaboratively to dust off the plan and revisit it and, uh, and make it more robust. So it's, it's successful for everybody in the county, not just St. Helens. So that's all I have to report. Um, Halloween Town was a huge success, is from the first responders. No incidents, no arrests, no medical calls. Uh, we are having an after-action report next week with the Emergency Operations Center to go over, uh, what we did right and what we can improve on and what we can build on. So that's next Wednesday at, uh, three o'clock. And, um, it, uh, it's always a, a good time just to, to kinda get everybody together and, and build that camaraderie and everybody knows faces. And, uh, just, you know, a huge thank you to every, every outside agency that came into our city to assist us. It was, it was well-needed because we, uh, we anticipate for the worst and hope for the best. And, uh, although I'm sure that, you know, I was kinda hoping for more people like all of us, um, but the ones that were ten there were definitely safe and it was, uh, very successful, in my opinion.
I was pretty impressed. I, I went down and I checked out the operation and, uh, there was a lot of inner-agency collaboration. Even had Noah weather there. I said, well, we're not gonna get any thunderstorms today, are we? He said, no, maybe a little wind.
Right. Noah weather's important because they, unlike meteorologists, and this isn't a knock on any type of news, they are the people that can tell you in fifteen minutes, there's gonna be a gust of wind or a microburst, and they are spot-on. So they are gonna be incorporated in any of these large future events. We had a drone out there. Uh, we'll be testing that for the future. That is a, uh, a good tool to use to estimate crowd size and, uh, and for, for everybody, you know. So we'll be incorporating that in, at the end of twenty nineteen.
I was really impressed with the command post, how they could just watch everything. Everybody was on camera. They don't know it. Everybody was on camera and it was pretty, pretty amazing to be able to sit right in a trailer and watch the whole Halloween Town operation. And it was, yeah, I was pretty impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pass that on to the people who actually did the work. So thank you, sir. And that's all I have.
Okay. Hey, Margaret? Really? You always have something for us.
I, 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 maybe I'll add something tonight.
Okay. Matt?
Just a, a couple things. We have the towing RFP that is, um, on the, I think tomorrow is the deadline for proposals. Um, did any of the council members want to sit on that committee to review the proposals? If not, I will find some staff to, to get, I figured somebody from the Police Department, someone from an administration, just internal staff to look at it. But if the city council, if a council member wanted to sit on that, or not?
I don't think.
Full-day schedule?
Yep.
Okay, no worries. Um, one thing I did wanna bring up, uh, is in regards to the Farah Building. We are obviously in the midst of doing a lot of upgrades there. One question I wanted to propose, just to get your thoughts on that building, was Shawna and I have been over there almost every day for, oh, quite a while. Um, I have had to call the police twice because there have been RVs or cars that have parked there and tried to camp there. Public Works has had the issue too, I, I guess, after Neil found out that I'd called the police one time and said, oh, yeah. Called them, you know, once a week or whatever, because there's people parking in there or in the back by the water or anything like that.
That's his favorite spot, back by the water.
So I'm wondering if there's any opportunity or option that you would consider to putting up some sort of, um, at least a nice-looking fence or something. Um, we've also started seeing, um, animal droppings, uh, from dogs mainly um, in the back where the other day we were having a kids' program and there's dog feces in the, in the grass. So, you know, we can't really play soccer. Um, so just a couple of issues that have kind of come up in the last month or so that kinda warrants at least me asking the question of would you consider doing some kind of a fence or me coming back to you with some ideas, um, and maybe after talking with Public Works and seeing what their thoughts are and, and trying to come up with a couple options.
I appreciate it, bringing it to our attention. Um, I, I'd like to, uh, kinda have time to consider that, consider the options. I certainly don't wanna make up my mind today whether I say fence or no fence or whatever.
No, I, I wouldn't, I'm sorry, I wouldn't anticipate you to make a decision tonight. Yeah.
Um, I had just, I like the space open, you know, it's nice. I'm sure that people in the multifamily, they're using that space as park space because they don't have a yard. You know, they walk their dogs or whatever. But I wondered how much, how hard it'd be to do the, we have those dog receptacle something there that if there's no place for people to bag their stuff, you know, if you don't post it, it, the law doesn't exist. You know what I'm saying? For a lot of people, I know that in the city limits you have to do that. But every other place where there's a walking trail or a nature place on city property, there's, and if receptacle, it says, bag your pets refuge. And there's nothing there, whether you're visiting the Farah Building or whether you're just walking down Old Bron Road. So there's nothing there that says that. So I'm sure that, I would bet the Polk Works has those things around. And I don't know if that might be a less intrusive start than a fence.
Uh, I would be opposed to that myself. But there's a dog park less than quarter mile away. I, I've seen the people there because I go in and out of there a lot, whatnot. Hasn't been an issue so far because we obviously haven't been using it and whatnot. But I think maybe, maybe we start off with some signage that, uh, this is not a park and that it's city-owned property and it's private property and, uh, maybe certain things are not allowed there, whatnot now that we, because you're right, uh, people have been, um, a lot of different people have been abusing that for some time now. So we need to go through a transition period where they know what it, what it's for and, uh, that it's not certain individual playgrounds or whatnot.
If we are going to be having more activities with children there, I could see where maybe having some kind of a barrier between the kids and traffic wouldn't be a bad idea.
I could see that in the future pending the use of the building and as we, you know, start getting down there. But if you're okay, I'm happy to work with Public Works to figure out some signage to see, um, what effects those have first.
In the short term, no overnight parking.
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Yep.
And there's a lot of trucks that park there and truck drivers that come in and use it to, uh, uh, park their trucks or trailers for a couple days.
Yep. Okay, I'll work on some signage and, and I'll work with Public Works to, to get that up then.
I'd, I'd like to add that maybe we need to look at a, a more comprehensive look because if I'm not mistaken, some of the people that are staying there are at the library during the day. If I understand, something Roger told me earlier. And we're having the same problem with the, um, dog feces as well. So, um, maybe looking at where we wanna institute no overnight parking signs and some of that needs to be looked because we may just be bouncing one problem from one location back to another.
And there may be, there may be even a, um, code enforcement issue there that we could have Amara, is that right?
She goes by Mary.
She goes by Mary? That's even, that's a lot easier. Okay.
We do have an overnight, we do have a no camping ordinance on public properties. I'm sure you're aware of.
Uh, that's all I had.
Okay. Kathy?
I have a couple things. Uh, Melinda's asked me to ask the council if you guys wanna do a trunk-or-treat booth this year.
We did it last year. I'll, I'll work it for a little bit.
I'm gonna be working the library one.
I'm not available, so. She's doing so.
Uh, uh, no, but I'll make an appearance and I'll bring some treats.
Yeah, youth council already volunteered, so I can't be in two places.
Uh, they're gonna be having a booth?
Youth council's already doing it. And she said library's already doing it, so.
So last year, we kinda worked a table, didn't we, Susan? Isn't that what we did?
Yeah. Got a table that had a little, a little game.
A game on it. Yep, the beanbag.
What's the time in a, my calendar straight?
Um, five to eight. There you go, five to eight.
Yeah, last year I floated between that and.
You were waiting on me, and then I, I showed up.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then I went over to the other one. But this year, we have a shortage of library members to be able to do it, so.
I better say no.
Volunteered.
Just off the top of my head, I can't be there from five till eight.
So.
I could be there part of that time, but I'm not certain.
So we'll be represented anyway. We'll be there.
Other council.
I could be there.
Okay, so I'll tell her no. Um, the other thing I have is, um, something came up with the last, not this past weekend, but the weekend before with the parade, um, about people who come in, excuse me, to apply for a parade permit. They don't pay for a cleanup. And there was a significant cleanup that needed to be done after that parade. So we've been talking about requiring a deposit.
Sure.
For them to pay that and wanted to know if the, to, to, what the deposit would be for would be, hopefully, we could possibly get the deposit, hold on to the check, and if it gets cleaned up, great, we just hand the check back to them. If it doesn't, it's a, kind of like a bond. If it doesn't get cleaned up, then we can take the money, deposit it and use it to, towards Public Works cleaning it up.
I think that's reasonable. Yeah.
Well, how much are you thinking about putting on there? Like a, I mean, I wanna keep it affordable, that it's not so far out of reach that we never have a parade here.
Yeah, I, I, um, Sue's gonna be doing some, Sue and Neil are gonna do some numbers to try to figure it out.
I know they'll be fair.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Okay.
So as long as you're favorable to that, then I'll just keep working on it.
Okay.
And come back with more concrete numbers.
Just, I don't know if this has already been addressed. It always struck me strange, having gone to a lot of parades in other cities, is Hudson's always in our parade, and I always wondered why they're, what, they weren't the last entrant in the parade. In other cities, their waistband is last entrance and they have the big carts. And people who, that are watching the parade come out and put their stuff in the carts. And literally, they clean up as they go. And so it's just becomes part of their service to the community. I don't know if they're paying for that service and that's just part of doing the parade, rather than having Public Works have to deal with it on Monday and have it blow all over the place.
That's my idea, too.
We, our idea would not be that they come back on Monday. Our idea would be that the people that clean it, clean it up that day, that, right after.
Right. But if they don't clean up and Public Work has to do it, they're not gonna, Public Works is not gonna use it on Saturday.
What, they drag along a, a, a cart or something like that? And then there's a sign on there that says they're, with their trash in or what?
In Portland, they push those big carts right down the street and people come walk out and put them in there and they, they just do it. It's just part of the habit of being in a parade in Portland.
So this parade, actually, at about eleven o'clock, I came down and, uh, finally the town had cleared. There was a lot of garbage and Tina had already cleaned up a lot. Um, but there was still a lot of garbage. But what I seen was no cars and it would be really easy for our street sweeper to have come through and just, at midnight, and been able this to blast that out or, or very early in the morning, because it's not allowed. I mean, it's not over any noise ordinance, that sweeper.
Yeah, and it, and it could be that we, we give them the option. You either clean it up or we, um, charge you this dollar amount and we pay that right up front.
Yeah.
So it, there's kinda some flexibility in how we do it. Um, to allow a small parade versus a big parade, you know, we don't wanna penalize the small parade and then them not wanna do it because they can't afford it.
Or to clean up.
But also the thing is that, um, the big parades that we have throw candy out.
Yes.
You know, if, 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 if we want to, part of having that is, everybody loves that, but, um, part of having that is having the trash. And so. And so, the, we hope the applicant would take the responsibility to clean it up. I mean, Tina went out and did that and it wasn't her parade.
No.
Nobody from her parade, nobody that was, got the application, did the cleanup. So, um, I just think that the applicants need to take more responsibility on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll do some more work on that and then come, bring it back to you guys.
So, and that's what I'd like to see, maybe a bigger, a bigger parade, it's, uh, maybe it's just an automatic fee. If you're estimating that it's gonna be a big parade, uh, of participants, not the parade itself, not people entering, I want to know how many the crowd draws.
Right.
If it's gonna be four thousand or two thousand people, that's enough probably for a street sweeping.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I, I mean, coming from the, doing the Quanis Parade several years, I mean, we don't pay a fee anymore since it's nonprofit, so, you know, doing a cleanup fee of at least a hundred dollars would be, I would see that would be acceptable.
At least.
Then that would pay for the street sweeper to go up and down, you'd think anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Tina?
First of all, does anyone have any questions? We can just answer them quickly. Well, that's a good question. Um, so thus far, we are experiencing exactly what we had planned by having the, um, four pumpkin lightings that are going on instead of just one. That has definitely, um, changed the structure of the crowd. It's been really busy. The first weekend, um, of this month, we had absolutely fantastic attendance and, um, the vendors all recorded, you know, significant percentages of revenue over the year before during the same timeframe. And, um, we attribute that to essentially great weather and, um, just a great combination of, uh, promotion and advertising. We had a, a big radio, um, by that was in Portland on that week. And we also did a number of, of course, social media and we had, uh, you know, celebrity appearance too on Saturday. So, the difference this year in having, um, you know, an actor or celebrities every weekend, I think is making exactly the change that we thought it was going to make.
And is there a change in the, the businesses or restaurants and that kind of, uh, those kinds of operations, uh, uh, from years past?
Well, this is, you know, my fear is that we get to this certain level and it's like, okay, every year we're gonna have, we're gonna do more and more business and at some point it's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be equivalent to the year before. And, uh, which was already, you know, extraordinary, um, increases over what it was two years ago.
I heard from two restaurants the other day that they are doing more business during the week than they did last year and that was the significant change for them.
Yeah. So, um, right now, like from, from the first until right now, it's my opinion that we've had about fifteen thousand people. And that includes weekdays and weekends. And that also includes a weekend with a super huge, uh, football game going on in the middle of the day, which I was like, oh, okay.
Go Ducks!
Did they play?
Yeah. They beat UW. Beat them Huskies.
And we've been doing surveys, um, as well and in doing that, we've been, um, asking all kinds of different questions to people, but the people that are coming, it's interesting that there's a significant percentage that have been there here now from two years ago and now this is like their tradition. And, um, one of the comments that I got from one of the vendors was, I wanted to let you know I had some great stories from our out-of-area visitors. Last weekend we had several from Northern Washington, Bellingham and Seattle. We also had an entire group of Belly Dance, which is like the Hexen beat brute as you see on YouTube. They came for the parade. They're coming for the parade next year as an entry and they said they'll be watching for postings. One of the best stories proclaiming us to be truly national and international destination come from a pair of Missouri women who were wearing Halloween shirts walking through the Portland airport. They told me another woman stopped them and said, hey, are you going to Halloween Town? They replied, yes, to which she responded, me too. So, that's kind of a cool thing. I also had met a couple who'd flown in from Staten Island for the weekend, a family from Hawaii and there was quite a few people passing through the area that had heard ads on the radio and the news and decided to take a detour and come to see us. Everyone was excited and upbeat and I actually had four families ask me about the cost of housing, the job market and the commute to Portland with the potential for starting new business here. So, that's great, you know, feedback from people that are just in the, in the general crowd. I, um, also wanted to, uh, thank the police and the, and the CERT team and everybody that was on the, um, security details for the past weekend. They were awesome. And, um, I did have, I just wanted to put on the record, I did have nine calls, uh, during the, during Saturday of, um, from the health department, asking me to open the bathrooms and make sure we had running water. And I knew that all sixteen bathrooms were open and that we had running water, but the calls continued and then finally I took pictures of the bathrooms and the running water and I sent it to the person at the health department and they were like, what is going on? And I'm like, I really don't know. I think that there's some people with their own agendas that are there that are just intentionally trying to, um, you know, waste my time basically. But, um, so, when, once I sent them the pictures, they were, um, you know, completely like, okay, no problem. But I did want to just put that on the record as something that was really kind of strange. I also wanted to say that we have a new, um, sponsor in Bank of the West. They have come on board to sponsor our events. And, um, I'd say overall the festival is going very well, the vendors are all really happy. The last report from stores that track is that they're about forty-two percent. That's a very decimal point comment over what they were last year at this time. I'd have to say that, uh, the upcoming weekend is, for the grim weekend, is gonna be, I think, really fun and entertaining for people that are coming. And we now have, uh, ten people signed up to get married here by Calabar, which was our goal. My goal was ten. We got ten people now. Some of them are flying in from across the country. And, um, so we're planning very special wedding program for them that I think they'll be really happy with and I think the audience is gonna love it. And, um, then of course we have the hellish wedding reception which will follow and we have some fun activities for that whole weekend. So, it just, you know, it takes the whole community of people involved to just keep everything running and, and keeping guests as happy as we possibly can. We, um, are instituting new signage and all kinds of things to just be able to communicate to the guests that are here because you can't have enough people on the ground that know everything. So, we have a new, um, some new signs that we're adopting that kind of show maps of this is how you get to here and there that we'll be putting up around town. And, um, I had met with the parade people following the parade and I think Heather, uh, did a great job and her whole team and Guild Mortgage and American Family Insurance and we discussed some new ideas that I think will help the parade grow and just be more impactful than it ever has been before and, um, that we can, uh, facilitate and just help get some, uh, solutions where they're needed and to provide some growth ideas where, where possible. And, um, we have people that are already calling us to say, see how they can get involved next year, so that's great.
Me and Susan were literally scraping our box right towards the end to get.
We made it though.
We made it, we did make it. We passed out.
We did not run out of candy.
The city of St. Helens passed out eight thousand pieces of candy. That's a lot of candy.
That's a lot of candy. That is a lot of candy. But I think that the number of people that came to the parade was kind of staggering.
It was.
So.
It was.
Would you agree?
Absolutely, it looked like about three times as many as usually attending any parades in St. Helens.
Yeah.
That were overflowing the curbs.
So, we have, we have plans to, to fix, not fix, but to just make that a better guest experience for people that come so they can see everything and, and not be so crowded, you know, into the street that it's basically impassable, but.
Well, part of the problem was that people that were at the top of the street followed the parade down, which crowded the people that were up there.
So, we're gonna, the, the solution to that is we're gonna have party in the back, so we're gonna have like Hit Machine playing as the final float. So, you dance down the street to Hit Machine instead of racing along the side.
Need a pride piper.
To, yeah, to kind of keep up with the parade. And, uh, there's some, there's lots of little things that, that we're going to assist them with. The chamber has some fun things that are coming up this weekend too with the monster dance and the pumpkin roll and, um, so I think it's gonna be, you know, another nice weather weekend too, so.
When is this off the clock?
Doesn't happen anymore.
I know She's Springs doing stuff.
She's Springs doing lots of stuff, mhm.
They've got a full itinerary from Friday afternoon till Sunday when they pass out.
That's right, they, they took care of that, right?
Yeah. They, being inside the building and outside is, will allow them to have a more sustainable entertainment.
So, I think everything's going pretty, pretty well so far. Some little hiccups, but nothing that we can't handle, so.
Be nice to see how, at the end of our next council meeting, because it'll be over by then to have a full report. Yeah.
Yeah.
Look forward to it.
We had K A T U out today and we had King Five News doing Evening Magazine and we just got picked up on Bustle. I just saw that come across my social media feed and another national, um, another national, uh, social media site, so. It's continuing to churn.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Locke?
All I had to report was that, uh, our tenants over at Boise, they had their first kind of malfunction because, uh, apparently the mill had a electrical shutdown and shut down their operation also and dumped their cameras and backups and everything, so.
I don't know.
Luckily, it's early in the process and they'll have a way to fix it.
Is there a solution?
Yeah, so, we're working on that.
Yeah, it's a little bit of an issue.
Yeah.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, Counselor Carlson.
I had a couple of things, I'm sure as thorough as our new police chief is, he already knows about this. Um, just make sure the reindeer run is on your radar. So, I know the police had participated in that and in the past that they had gotten money from the proceeds for the volunteer, for the Recruit Academy, for the Volunteer Academy. Reserve Academy, I knew there was a word there, but, um, we, since its inception, the police have gotten a chunk of that money. And I know that Officer Jose, I can't remember his title currently, but Jose and Chief Moss ran in it with their spouses or with their families. So, I just want to make sure that we don't, that they don't, aren't expecting our participation and we, right. The other thing they had was, I just wanted to follow up. I, I know sometimes things fall off the agenda and we don't follow up on them. We've talked about it for two years now, a new sign at the industrial park.
Yes.
And I'm gonna keep putting that on my report until there's a sign there.
Hey. Well, let's, let's make that an action item.
We, we have made that an action.
A month ago.
We did, yes, me and.
We'll make it an action, action item.
So, I will say this, we actually have the, the debris cleared. Yes, from where the sign will go. The, the yard debris is all cleaned up, looks a lot different.
So, I mean, to finish my report, um, as, as a gardener, um, I don't consider azaleas to be debris, but I just want a sign appears there, I will be happy.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I have is, youth council had, um, with the art installation that happened on the side of the batting cage with Lisa, or the person that's on the Arts Commission now.
Lisa.
Lisa, she, um, directed people that participated in that to our youth council and we had an application from that and then we had someone from Fall Festival that turned in an application. Our youth council members are very excited about getting new homeschool students that are coming to this to, for a chance to be included in our community. And they made a decision to spend some of their money to get sweatshirts because they want to be part of the community this fall and t-shirts aren't warm enough and they want to still match and be prideful of our community. So, um, that was charged with seeing if I could get sweatshirts for them before they have to be outside in the cold. The other thing they had was Keith is working on getting, um, information lined up for the Christmas ship dinners. And so, if people have input or feedback about preferences or restaurants that you think might want to be included or caterers that might want to be included, just forward that to Keith. And this Friday is the first teen night. This Friday, the nineteenth, from five to seven at the Farah Building. Now, city building, but the green building on the corner. The green building at the corner of Eighteenth. They'll be five to seven, they're doing cornhole and games and snacks for ages eleven to seventeen and the youth council will be volunteering there, helping support, um, the rec program and thus kind of, they were excited about joining and partnering with the city team to support other things for kids their age. That's all I have.
Can we officially name that St. Helens Recreation Program Building or the St. Helens Rec Program or whatever? Can we do that and not refer to it as a Farah Building from now on? Perfect.
Is that getting consensus?
Yes.
Yep, so we just need to practice that now.
It'll be up tomorrow.
Yes.
Are you gonna go there?
Now, that's an act. So, if you want to, if you want to include that other sign with it.
Now, yeah, can we put you on the other sign?
Action, action item.
I just, it just would go a long way when, you know, we can't get simple things followed through it.
Well, I know that Roger's probably the person who's going to be doing that and Roger is so overworked at this point doing the veterans thing and doing so many things.
The bathroom down here.
Exactly.
Yep.
Maybe you guys can call it the Shrek Building?
It's supporting our identity though.
Shrek Building.
Yeah.
S H R, the St. Helens Rec Center, Shrek Building.
There you go.
That's robotic.
Yeah, somebody's used it already.
The one thing, um, just as a go back, I just want to appreciate, um, whoever it was that made the decision, I noticed, um, to get all that area cleaned up that was so, to partner local businesses to help the city get that all cleaned up over there. I saw some locally owned business trucks helping out over there and to get it done, because then the pressure doesn't all go on to the city Public Works, because this time of year is all hands on deck with all the projects we have going on. But good way to be resourceful and make sure that gets done.
I, I will comment on the sign that it might be a little premature because we really are not ready to be an industrial park yet, so.
No, but we want people to know that that's what's planned.
With only one sign there, it, it leads people to believe they're in charge of everything.
Yes. Agree.
So, something official and wonderful and grand could happen later, but it wouldn't take that much to put something there that would indicate we're in charge.
I agree.
Okay, Counselor Khan?
Okay, um, as you know, I went to the Northwest CIT Conference in Kennewick, Washington last week. And, uh, I thought I'd let you know what some of the classes were that I went to. One of them was, uh, sequential intercept ma- mapping or SIM, which is mapping community resources as they relate to law enforcement and criminal justice and corrections and mental health. Pulling everybody together, which is something we have apparently done before, but I think it's time to do it again because things have changed. And that lipstick will be the one that determines that.
That's, yeah, disagree.
And, um, another one was CIT for Corrections. It was in custody risk avoidance, which is, I think, something that we can be interested in as well since, since we do house prisoners there. Also, I saw an excellent training model for Corrections that Clark County has that, uh, I think can supplement the kind of things that we're looking toward. But, uh, really was more specific to, uh, the kind of things that we're looking toward, but, uh, really was more specific to, uh, jail corrections. But it was really interesting information. Uh, then I went to Integration of Behavioral Health Services and Law Enforcement from Patrol and Policy Levels and an, a fascinating presentation on school shooters from a psychologist who, who works with them. He was dealing with violence trends and threat assessments and he's, he had a, he had a reading list, so I'm gonna be following up on that because it was some really interesting things. Uh, another one was.
He had a ra- a rating list?
Reading, reading list. Yep, books, book recommendations.
Okay.
Uh, it was also thoughtful approaches to reduce incarceration for persons experiencing behavioral health issues, which again, I think ties back to, to us and R C I T as well. So I think it was a really worthwhile few days. I went with Brianne Maris, who's R C I T Coordinator, so it, it will have, be having further discussions in the, in the, um, steering committee meetings about it. Um, also later, I'll have, uh, appointments that were recommended by the library board because we have positions open and we're gonna work on filling them.
Okay. All right, Counsel President Morton.
Okay, hey, for the old man on the council, it's been really interesting getting around the entire city, walking. What was I thinking? And walking the entire city to, to, you know, get the word out that, you know, I'm campaigning. I, I think, I start thinking that I should do this every year, just to get invigorated.
And get ideas back from the public.
Get ideas back, everyone wants to talk, if, that you meet, they got something to say and it's, it's wonderful. And most of it is like ninety-five percent good stuff back. And so that's, I think that's what keeps me going in, in many senses. But it's, uh, it's, it's a great experience to do that, just about finished. So I'll be knocking on everyone's door and if you're home, that's fine, if not, you know, you get my, uh, you get the pamphlet of what the council has been up to and what the staff has been up to and, uh, what I've encouraged. So, that being said, uh, I want to go on to, um, our Veterans Project, our, our Veterans Plaza Project over at McCormick Park. It will not be one hundred percent complete. It will be probably ninety or eighty-five percent complete. So, we'll have probably a rendering there of what it's going to look like when we get all the, uh, memorials and all of those things in place. But there will be the celebration on one-one, 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 or six ones, and that is November eleventh at eleven AM. So, it's one-one, one-one, one-one for everyone. Now, Veterans Day falls on the eleventh and it's like, for the veterans, it's like Christmas. Christmas never changes. A lot of people are saying, well, we can't be there on Sunday, can you move it to Monday? Because it's falling outside, uh-uh. No, it's sacred on the eleventh. So that's when it's going to be and who can make it, can make it and who can't, can't. But the celebration will go on. Uh, I'm looking, uh, I'm looking forward to that, it's been very exciting. As you know, it's been a, a collaborative effort between the veterans but, and our project director who is volunteering his time and that's our engineer, uh, Andrew Namie at, uh, South Columbia Engineering and the city, and the city has been big in this. Uh, Public Works has been, everyone has been behind this in the city, so a big thanks to, uh, all of those people. That's it for now, thanks.
Thanks. Well, all I got to report on is that we have a burn ban, uh, in effect right now and, uh, we are actually getting ready to open up burning on the twentieth, but the fire marshal or, or Chief Greason has actually put a burn ban on the area. So, we need to come up with a date, I'm thinking like, uh, I would like to see, uh, November, the first week of November to through even Thanksgiving, three week period of burning allowed in city limits. We have a burn ban right now and we're supposed to be open to burn on the twentieth, but it just went into effect. So that gives everybody about three weeks to burn, if they need to burn.
So is that the fires that have to be twenty feet away from a building or is that the recreational fires?
Oh, recreational fires are still okay. It's, uh, it's actual yard burning and we're set to go on the twentieth of this month and it, there's a burn ban, so I was thinking like, maybe even November second to through the twenty-fifth, that's three weeks. And if the burn ban's lifted, it may not even be lifted till November seventh, eighth. It just matters how much rain we get, which I'm not praying for rain because we have a lot of outdoor events this month. So.
If that's, if that's what you're thinking, that's a good recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
I'm thinking, can, can the council just give the mayor the authority for whatever we need to do when we know?
When it goes into effect.
Yeah, when we know, so we, we could just do it.
Good recommendation, yes.
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 That's all. Yep, Keith, seriously, because Keith used to, I, I remember I used to even.
That's this much authority.
When I first came in, he was talking about this burn ban. So, okay, that's all I had and, uh, anybody got any go-backs? No? Okay, we're adjourned.
We're figuring the go-backs in now? Because we always have them.
Thanks for sharing, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, yeah.